Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Harry Cohen. Representing District Two, Ken Hagan. Representing District Three, Gwen Myers. Representing District Four, Stacy White. Representing District Five, Mariella Smith. Representing District Six, Pat Kemp. Representing District Seven, Kimberly Oberman. The county administrator is Bonnie Wise. The county attorney is Christine Beck. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue, so we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call the Board of County Commission meeting to order for June 15, 2022. And we don't need a real roll call because all of the board members are present, however, many of them are in the multipurpose room for our wonderful program that we have today. But first, we're going to have the invocation and the pledge given by our chaplain, Commissioner Stacy White. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll ask that everyone please stand at this time. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, I pray that you will guide this board, our staff, and stakeholders as we make important decisions this morning. Also, thank you for putting us in good hands for the future with all of these bright and good and talented young people that will be recognized here this morning. And as always, I pray for our first responders and members of our armed forces. Pray that you'll keep them safe and guide them each and every day. I give these thanks and ask for these blessings in your heavenly name. And as board chaplain here at the diocese, I'll just state for the record that the chairwoman is making her way to the multipurpose room, and she will continue to run the meeting from there once she arrives.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Today, it is our pleasure to celebrate the accomplishments of six outstanding young people as we present the Youth Excellence Achievement Awards, known as the YAY Awards, which will be presented in the multipurpose room downstairs, which is where I just ran to. Sorry for the delay. This is the 12th year of the program, which is created to recognize young people's positive contributions in areas such as academics, community service, athletics, and performing arts. I look forward to this ceremony every year. It's one of my most favorite. And with that, it warms my heart and gives me great hope for the future to see how these young people have accomplished so much in such a short period of time. Before we introduce the honorees, I want to recognize the members of the Hillsborough County Commission on the Status of Women. The Commission on the Status of Women does an outstanding job each year of selecting the YAY Award winners. It must be a challenge because there's so many great candidates. But just to pick six winners, all wonderful nominees, we truly appreciate your service. Commissioner, I'm sorry, the Commissioner on Status of Women, Chair Lee Lowry, is with us today, along with a very special guest, which I... Chair Lowry, would you like to say a few words, followed by Tony De Silvio?
Good morning. Thank you so much. We're really pleased to be here, and thank you so much to the Board of County Commissioners for all their support of us, and to you, Chair Oberman. I'm excited to represent the outstanding women of the Commission on the Status of Women. A little bit about us, we are members appointed by the Board of County Commissioners members or we are assigned because of our position in the community. We represent organizations like The Spring, Myoren Hillsborough Community College, USF, and many, many others, Children's Board. And we support the Board of County Commissioners by studying issues affecting women in Hillsborough County. Two of the really fun things that we get to do is this awards. This is one of our very favorite things. And then we also support the Women's Hall of Fame. So if you haven't ever seen that, it's right now at the Orthenia Joyner Library. We recommend you go look at those outstanding women, too. We have some exciting issues in the year to come that we're planning to study, so stay tuned. We're really excited about those. But this morning, of course, is all about the YAY Awards, and it's absolutely true, these are outstanding students. It was incredibly hard to choose. We're thrilled to be here. They're really here today. That's really neat. But we had, I think, over 50 applications in our three categories for high school and for middle school, and we had to pick just three high schoolers and middle schoolers at the top in all those. So parents out there, I see you smiling. You should. You have some really terrific kids. We're very proud to have them in the county. And I hope that one of these young women someday might wind up in our Hall of Fame. I wouldn't be surprised. So thank you so much again to Tony Salvagio, who made an incredible donation to these students. They're all receiving a laptop today. So Tony, would you like to say a word or two?
Thank you. It's good to see you, too.
Hey, good morning, everyone. My name is Tony Salvagio, and I'm not from around here. I actually was born and raised in Venezuela, and I came April 10 of 2011. And that's why everything that's happening here is so important to me, is when I came here to this community with very little, this place gave me everything. It opened its arms to me, to my dream, to my vision. It gave me my business. It gave me my wealth. It gave me my two precious daughters. It gave me my friends and everything that I know. So I will be forever indebted to this place, this city, this county that believed in me since I started. And it's just a small token of appreciation to let you know that the community is here for you, the same way that it was for me. So keep trying to be the best. Keep pushing, keep studying, and we'll always be here for you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. This is why we love living in Hillsborough County, right? All of our six honorees have demonstrated a very special drive, determination, and commitment to our community that are critical for the next generation of leaders in our community. Too often, it's the worst examples of team behavior that are displayed and get attention on the internet and in the news. We take a different approach in Hillsborough County. The young people who devote themselves to the betterment of our community through strong leadership, through determined action, will shape Hillsborough County's future. This board and the residents of Hillsborough County are committed to honoring and encouraging all those efforts that these young individuals have provided. And we had many applications to consider. When we have 50 young people that actually apply and make it so hard to choose, that says a lot about the young people in our community and the support that they get from the community. So today, we celebrate the next generation of YAY Awards. There are three categories: leadership, volunteer or community service, and success despite difficult odds. One award in each of the category goes to a high school student, and one award is presented to a middle school student. Commissioner Kemp is here with us today. Will present the first two awards. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. The YAY Award recipients in the leadership category demonstrate positive impact on others in an ongoing endeavor, such as sports, academics, or the arts. Will Brenna McGuire and her family please join me at the podium? So thank you for coming, Brenna. A student at Tinker Middle School has a very special attitude for someone her age. It is see a need, fill a need. She's made a significant impact on many lives. As a member of a military family, Brenna has not let the challenges of deployments, moves, and uncertainty get the best of her. In fact, she's used this service to our nation, which includes living in five states and four countries, as an opportunity to help others and grow her leadership. Despite frequent moves, Brenna was a Girl Scout for five years and earned the Bronze Award for a Community Service Project. In addition, she's participated in multiple theater and aerial arts performances. Brenna only arrived at Tinker last school year, but what an impression she's made. She's an officer in the Future Business Leaders of America, the managing editor of the Tinker K-8 Year Book, a team leader in the Anchored 4 Life Program, which helps military children with transition and change. And as an A4L team leader, Brenna helped recruit representatives, lead meetings, plan activities, and participated in two community service projects. Incredible leadership. One initiative was a canned food drive that benefited the Veterans Food Pantry, and another was Random Acts of Kindness Week, which promotes kindness, which we cannot have enough of. Thank you. As an FBLA officer, Brenna helped plan and lead FBLA activities, including meetings, community service projects, and fundraisers. One community service project was called Socktober, a sock collection drive that helped warm the feet of the homeless. Further, Brenna won third place in the Digital Citizenship Competition in the school district. As the yearbook managing editor, Brenna played a key leadership role and was responsible for leading the design of the yearbook and its completion. For her initiative and go-getter drive, Brenna McGuire is the middle school recipient of the YAY Award in the Leadership category. And this is for you. That's for you. And would you like to say a few words?
Sure. I feel as though I've grown tremendously over the past year, and I would like to thank all of my family, not just the ones here today, and my teacher, Ms. Butler. She's actually the reason that I won this award. She's given me so many opportunities to lead and grow as a person. She led FBLA and A4L, and she was my yearbook teacher. And I would like to thank her so much for all that, and I will miss her a lot. So thank you so much, and I wish you well in the future. And I would like to thank all my family as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Such eloquence. You must be very proud. Thank you, Brenna, for everything you do as a leader. And now we'll have a photo taken, I guess. Just maybe we got it before. Our second winner is an amazing young man who's excelled academically and as an entrepreneur, our Ashton Kitchener and his family, and Barbara Howard joining us on the call today.
Yes, I'm here. Thank you.
Great. We have you virtually. Good morning, Ashton. I understand that you and your family are on vacation, so thank you for joining us virtually today. A Tampa native and middle son of South African immigrant parents, Ashton has achieved so much at Newsome High School as a true leader, where he excelled academically, athletically, and through volunteerism. In addition to volunteering over 275 hours at the Tampa Sailing Squadron over the last four years, he served on his high school freshman, sophomore, and junior class councils. Ashton is also a Tampa Bay lacrosse official, where he's learned the value of honesty and integrity and can be found on the field officiating elementary and middle school lacrosse games. As an AP Scholar with Honors, a member of the National Honor Society, a part of the executive leadership of the Roche Kappa Honor Society, he earned his Associate of Arts degree from Hillsborough Community College and will graduate with a weighted GPA of 7.77. That's pretty incredible. Ashton has proven himself to be a successful business owner as well. He's the owner of ALK Enterprises LLC and a social media influencer. We're all wondering when you sleep. He will be attending the University of Florida in the fall, where he'll be studying business and entrepreneurship, partly funded by his @BoatsDirect Instagram page, which presently has 93,000 followers. Yep. It's no surprise that Ashton Kitchener was chosen as a high school recipient of the YAY Award in the Leadership category. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
And we'd like to invite you to say a few words.
Absolutely. So I'd just like to take this chance to thank the Board of County Commissioners, the Board for the Status of Women, and finally, Ms. Howard from the You Matter to Me organization for nominating me for the award. This award means so much to me, and it's so cool to be here with you all. I wish I could be here in person, but I'm so glad that we could all get together, even though I'm online. So thank you so much again.
Thank you. Are we making your Instagram page? Thank you, Ashton. I look forward to seeing you all, all that you will achieve, and you're off to a great start. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kemp. And thank you, Ashton. You're a rock star, obviously, so we're looking forward to seeing all the wonderful things you'll do in the future. Thank you very much. And with that, I want to introduce Vice Chair Smith, who will do the next two awards.
Good morning. The YAY Award recipients in the volunteer and community service category give their time to make life better for others. This describes Benjamin Mallon to a T. Benjamin, would you and your family like to join us at the podium? I am especially happy to be giving an award to Benjamin Mallon. He is a student of Coleman Middle School, where I was a student once, a long, long time ago. In fact, I was a cheerleader for Coleman. It was Coleman Junior High at that time. So it's my honor to be able to present this award to you today. Benjamin Mallon is a young man of action, sharing his generous heart with many people in our community. A lover of all sports, Benjamin wanted to do everything he could for young people who love sports but can't afford the equipment. Focused and on his own, Benjamin reached out to the Tampa Bay Sports Commission in December and asked about designating Replay Tampa Bay as his beneficiary for his bar mitzvah project. Replay Tampa Bay is a donation program for new and gently-used sporting goods, and Benjamin organized his own collection drive, created flyers, advertised on social media, and promoted it through his school and among youth sports leagues. His passion for philanthropy and sports resulted in a Replay Tampa Bay record of 800-plus sporting goods items and about $1,800 to support underprivileged youth in our community. Benjamin, what a big heart you have. This extraordinary effort isn't all that Benjamin does. A straight A student who regularly makes the principal's honor roll, Benjamin is on the math competition team at school and participates in the Best Buddies program. This wonderful program facilitates one-to-one friendships between individuals with and without intellectual and developmental disabilities. Benjamin also volunteers for the Buddy Baseball Organization, which pairs players with special needs with buddies so they can play baseball together. A socially-conscious student, Benjamin also volunteers for Metropolitan Ministries. My goodness, are there enough hours in the day? And has hosted lemonade stands to raise money for victims of natural disasters, religious hate crimes, and cancer research. Benjamin's drive and desire to improve the lives of others make him this year's YAY Award winner in the middle school category of volunteer or community service. Great job, Benjamin. And so I'm going to present, let's see, this is Benjamin's award, and ask Benjamin if you'd like to say a few words.
Thank you. Thank you to the Board of County Commissioners for the honor of choosing me for this community service award. It means a lot to me because I worked hard to benefit Replay Tampa Bay and my community, and I hope other kids will be motivated to find something they're passionate about and to use that passion to help others.
All right. And here we go.
And so here we will take a photo, but your service is an example that everyone can admire. So with that, we'll have a little photo opportunity.
All right. They have the computer, too.
Thank you very much. That'll come in handy. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Oh, you do? Okay. Yes, you sure do.
So at this point, I have the honor of presenting another award to Emily Moore Shreves and her family. Will you all join us at the podium? Good morning and welcome. A senior at Bloomingdale High School, Emily is at the top of her class, ranking first out of 572 students. As a first-generation college student, Emily graduated with her Associate of Arts degree from Hillsborough Community College before the high school awarded her diploma. Her accomplishments have been recognized with inductions into the Beta Club, the Science Honor Society, the National English Honor Society, Mu Alpha Theta, the Spanish Honor Society, and the National Honor Society, where she was the Secretary of Records. Emily completed AP Spanish and will receive the Seal of Biliteracy for her distinction in a foreign language. Additional club memberships include the Save Promise Club, where she serves as a community service liaison, the Humane Society Club, Mental Health Awareness Club, Ki Club, and UNICEF. But her volunteerism doesn't stop there. Emily currently has 330 hours of community service. Many of her hours were dedicated to the Art Factory, where she had the opportunity to teach children how to sew. She has given hours to a kid's place, a local foster home, in need of treat bags and donations. She has participated with Metropolitan Ministries, helping package goods for families in need of food, especially during the holidays. When Emily isn't giving back through service to her community, she can be found babysitting between 20 to 40 hours a week. She currently cares for a 10-month-old, 3-year-old, and 5-year-old. After graduating as valedictorian and senior class president from Bloomingdale, she will attend Harvard University.
Right. Congratulations.
As a political science major, with a minor in international relations or economics, Emily will no doubt continue to blaze the trail for women in leadership. And perhaps we'll see her one day in Washington, DC. For her service and commitment to help others in her community, Emily Moore Shreves is the YAY Award high school recipient in the volunteer or community service category, and congratulations for all you do. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you so much. Thank you. It's an honor to receive this, knowing that there's so many students that are deserving of this award. And I would just like to say thank you to my family and my community for making it possible for me to be so involved in. So thank you.
Well, thank you, Emily, and I look forward to seeing your leadership in the future. Well, Emily, I'm looking forward to an internship and a local leadership position, and then we'll let you go to Washington, okay? So what an honor, what a wonderful opportunity to celebrate some amazing young folks that are going to make a difference in our community locally. With that, I'd like to introduce Commissioner Cohen. He has the last two awards to offer. Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. You know, we talk a lot in our community about resilience, but resilience is a really important quality for people as well. And the YAY Award recipients in the success despite difficult odds category have overcome tremendous personal obstacles to attain success and have a positive impact on others. Martin Luther King Jr. once said that "the ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at times of challenge and controversy." Today's recipients in this category illustrate that philosophy to a T. Would Jay Sean Santos and his family please join me at the podium?
Good morning. Good morning, and welcome. Good morning. Hi.
Jay Sean, who attends Franklin Boys Prep, a middle school, knows all about turning challenges into triumphs. Through hard work, support from his loving mother and other adults in his life, and his passion for basketball, Jay Sean has blossomed and continued to grow after some early personal struggles in and outside school, including a period of homelessness with his family. It has been a remarkable turnaround, according to his mom and others who support him. Talented in math and reading, Jay Sean has demonstrated leadership qualities in the classroom, met academic and other personal goals, and is a team player, not just in basketball either. Caring, funny, and bright, Jay Sean now takes gifted classes, received academic awards, and has been on the high honor roll. He is captain of his AAU basketball team. Jay Sean is a natural on the hardwood, playing hoops since he was two, which is amazing. He is a dedicated and active participant in the lab, the Learning Academy of Basketball, which teaches lessons in life through this great sport. And he has shown Jay Sean is a true champion who continues to elevate who continues to elevate his game as he gets older. Jay Sean, for your hard work, spirit, and ability to overcome challenges, I am proud to recognize you as the middle school winner in the Success Despite Difficult Odds category. Congratulations.
And let us present to you this award.
I hear you're a pretty good trumpet player too. So perhaps next time you'll do that. But right now, why don't you say a few words to us?
I would just like to say thank you to my mom, my fifth-grade teacher, and my stepdad, to the Lab family, all the people who nominated me, and also a thank you to Commissioner Cohen for giving me this award. And that is all I have to say for today.
Thank you. Let's take a picture to commemorate the event. Okay. The last Yay Award goes to Kevin Ibarrius Nanyez. Unfortunately, neither he nor his family were able to be here today, but we are sending him his award, and he will receive it very soon. At the age of 13, Kevin, in addition to his mother and sister, immigrated from Mexico to escape a violent domestic situation and embrace the American dream. Kevin entered as an eighth grader in middle school with a limited knowledge of English. This period of his life was exceedingly difficult for this young man. But by the end of his ninth grade at Leonard High School, Kevin exited from the English as a Second Language Program and began taking honors classes and Advanced International Certificate of Education courses with extraordinary success. This is illustrated by his final grades and his overall district GPA of 4.0. His language skills transcended the barriers that many newcomers face when starting school in the United States. After graduating, he is starting to make plans for his post-secondary education. He would like to be in the criminal justice and law enforcement fields. Kevin Ibarrius Nanyez is a symbol of achieving distinction in his academics while having to learn a new language as a teenager and fulfilling all of the rigorous high school graduation requirements in the state of Florida. In recognition of Kevin's strength, hard work, and caring heart, I am happy to recognize him as the Yay Award winner in the Success Despite Difficult Odds category for high school students. Thank you, Kevin. And we know that no hurdle is great enough to stop you, and we're going to send you this beautiful award. I'm going to present it to Ms. Lowry on your behalf.
Thank you. I'll make sure he gets it.
Thank you very much. All right. Commissioner Overman.
Thank you. I can't tell you how excited I am about all the winners today. They are rock stars in our community. They certainly deserve these rewards. I'm so thankful for the computers that they will all have to make their lives better and easier and in spite of the fact that they succeed every day. What a special group. I'm happy to see all of us get together this year to celebrate and congratulate these young leaders. On behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, thank you for all that you do to continue to help make Hillsborough County the future bright. Each of you, at this point, you will go on and work in our community. You're a point of pride in our community, and we look forward to seeing the good work you will continue to do in Hillsborough County. This concludes our Hillsborough County 2022 Yay Awards Ceremony. And with that, we'll take a brief pause to allow our special recognition recipients to gather in the multipurpose room, and we'll do a group shot for those that are still present. So please, please join us here.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Will the following individuals join me at the podium? Robert Scott and Howard Harris of the MLK Parade Foundation, Pastor Felicia Tucker Johnson and Robin Lockett of the Tampa Bay June Coalition, the Reverend Willie G. Dixon of the Coach Foundation, and Maurice Allen of Feed Your Soul. Two groups come on this side over here. Split it. Some on this side, some on that side. Good morning, and thank you all for joining us for this historic occasion. Juneteenth is the oldest national-recognized celebration of the ending of slavery in the United States. In cities and counties across the nation, people of all races are coming together to acknowledge a period in our history that shaped and continues to influence our society today. I am honored to present this proclamation which celebrate June 19, 2022, as Juneteenth National Freedom Day in Hillsborough County. The proclamation reads, whereas Juneteenth represent the first day celebrating freedom in America for African-American and is the last known celebration for ending slavery while also embracing African-American history, culture, strength, and achievement. And whereas on June 19, 1865, America with the former slaves celebrated this new birth of freedom, naming it Juneteenth. And whereas for 99 years, America nurtured this freedom while serving in America's wars and conflicts, exemplifying courage and patriotism and exhibiting patience with grace in the face of dragon's law and severe inequality. And whereas, over the course of time and through many trials, Juneteenth liberation events flourished across the nation, inspiring citizens to honor their freedom through music, storytelling, education, ceremonies, and celebrations. And whereas, known as the grandmother of Juneteenth, Texas native Opal Lee devoted decades of her life to make Juneteenth as a federal holiday. She kept the spirit of the story of Juneteenth alive. And whereas, in many struggles and courtesy, Opal Lee's dedication on June 19, 2021, the 156th anniversary of the first Juneteenth, President Joe Biden signed into law the Juneteenth National Independent Day Act, creating a federal holiday to commemorate Juneteenth. And whereas, on July 14, 2021, the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners unanimously passed a motion making Juneteenth a county holiday, starting in 2022, allowing all county employees to celebrate Juneteenth. And whereas, the Tampa Bay Juneteenth Coalition, Feed Your Soul Fest, Coach Foundation, and the Martin Luther King Jr. Parade Foundation deserve recognition and praise for its continued commitment, dedication, and efforts that generated cultural awareness of Juneteenth. Now, therefore, be proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida does hereby declare June 19, 2022 as Juneteenth National Freedom Day in Hillsborough County and encourages everyone to celebrate Juneteenth and honor the achievements and contributions of African-Americans in Hillsborough County, the state of Florida, and the nation awarded the 15th day of June 2022. I'm going to ask Mr. Robert Scott and Mr. Howard Harris if you will say a few words.
They always get me first. We are very, very proud that Hillsborough County has decided to accept the MLK Parade Foundation as an event in support of all the African-Americans in Hillsborough County. We really appreciate it. The support for the MLK Parade has been tremendous. But there's a lot more to be done. Mr. Harris, I'm not going to talk too long.
Right.
So at this point, I'll just let him come on up and say a few words.
I would just like to say, Juneteenth was the start of Black Americans' quest for freedom and equality in America. It was the start as the awful institution of slavery was brought to a close. Martin Luther King, by the time Martin Luther King came on the scene, blacks were already deeply engaged in the struggle for freedom and equality. And he decided to dedicate his life to continuing that struggle. And through his efforts, he furthered what was originally intended for Juneteenth, which is for Black Americans to gain their freedom and equality in this country as American citizens. So we're just happy to be a part of the celebration. We hope to be a continuing part of the celebration going forward. And we just want the celebration to grow and blossom into a parade and whatever else is appropriate to celebrate African-Americans' freedom in this country.
Thank you all. At this time, we'll hear from Pastor Johnson and Ms. Lockett with the Coalition Foundation.
Good morning. It is such an honor to be here. There's an old adage that says, "If a task is once begun, never leave it until it's done. Whether the labor is great or small, do it well or don't do it at all." And I am just so grateful that we have started a Juneteenth journey that has ended up where it is now. But please understand, Juneteenth does not begin and end in 1863 and 1865. History has been buried, it has been drowned, and we are here to continue this journey to make sure that everything is resurrected to where it needs to be to continue to realize and understand what the American flag was intended to be in the beginning, which is freedom and justice for all. Thank you, Commissioner Myers. And we are just so grateful, and I thank God, that he has allowed our vessels to play this perfect role in moving forward on our Juneteenth journey. Thank you.
I want to thank Commissioner Myers just for making this happen. We do have a long way to go, but I'm so pleased with where we are now. So I look forward to creating, being involved with the parade and just for the acknowledgement of Juneteenth, for it to really be acknowledged for our community so we can really start celebrating it. And I'm just happy to hear that Hillsborough County has a day off on it, right? Just like MLK. So I think that this is a great move forward. Thank you.
And thanks to the both of you. And now we will hear from Reverend Dixon with the Coach Foundation.
Greetings to you, Commissioner Myers, and to all of your constituents and all of the people in the state of Florida, Hillsborough County. I bring you greetings and blessings in the spirit of Juneteenth. 10 years ago, I was inspired by God to bring Juneteenth to Florida. And I'll talk more about that during the public comments because I want to do a disclaimer. I'm going to tell you the other side of Juneteenth. But in the church, we would say, "Do unto others as they do unto you." So she has given everyone a proclamation except me. But nevertheless, Commissioner Myers, we want to give this to you. Isn't this beautiful? I'll take the money instead of the proclamation. Thank you.
Well, Reverend Dixon, thank you. And thanks to the organizations for recognizing me. But someone has Reverend Dixon's proclamation. So one organization has two. So please give Reverend Dixon his proclamation. Well, you know, the county, we're getting ready to do our budget. And so I'll try to make sure you can get in our budget. So at this time, we will have Maurice Allen to come and speak with your Food Fest, Feed Your Food Fest.
Yes, it is such an honor to be here. First, I want to take the moment to say again, thank you so much, Commissioner Graham Myers, for your impeccable leadership. I represent Allen's Entertainment Group, which is the founding group for Feed Your Soul Fest. And the premise of what we are doing is uniting our people around the idea that we do not have to stay where we are. Yes, we do celebrate what we have accomplished at this point, but there's so much more work to be done. And it can only be done by us coming together and leveraging our resources and our talents to build a better community in the Tampa Bay area and beyond. We can do it. The work is not over, but we must do it together. Thank you again for this great day that you've helped establish.
Thank you. Go ahead, Robert.
So I would like the opportunity to at least read the gift that was provided to Commissioner Myers. Says, "Thank you so much, dear Ms. Myers. When one wants to show appreciation, the words 'thank you' can be sufficient. Thank you can be expressed many different ways for the dedication that you have shown the Tampa Bay community and through your relentless efforts to make the Juneteenth celebration a national holiday. We say thank you so much." This is being presented to Commissioner Myers from the Tampa Bay Juneteenth Coalition, the Martin Luther King Parade Foundation, Coach Foundation, Florida Rising. Oh, I'm sorry, Feed Your Soul. And Howard Harris and Eddie Adams Jr. So we say thank you.
Again, thank you all so much. And for this weekend coming, we know we're going to have many activities celebrating Juneteenth in Hillsborough County. And we ask that you find one that you can attend. And remember that Juneteenth is a holiday for all. And thank you. And we're getting ready to take a group photo at this time. We got the feet. Okay, Madam Chair, I will turn it back to you now. Thank you.
active community members that really can help us celebrate Juneteenth. I think it's wonderful. I also want to thank all the recipients today for joining us and allowing us to celebrate, and all those that are giving back to the community, all those that make Hillsborough County a wonderful place to live and the best county in the state of Florida. So thank you so much. With that, I know Commissioner Myers will be joining us shortly, but with that, I'm going to recognize Administrator Wise to talk about the changes to the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one off-the-agenda item by Commissioner Hagan, item F1. This is to direct the county attorney's office and the environmental services division to prepare a draft amendment to the lake improvement grant program. We have one accommodation that has been deferred to a date to be determined. This is accommodation on behalf of the board recognizing Robert Kitner. We have one revision or correction to the agenda. Item B3, this is authorizing the use and pricing from available cooperative contract for new county-wide fire station alerting system. The correct funding should be noted as from American Rescue Plan. We have one consent item removed for highlighting by Commissioner Overman. It's item A4. This is to approve the Articles of Incorporation to establish the Hillsborough County Community Land Trust, approve its bylaws, the creation of the Community Land Trust, and approve the initial board members of the CLT. We have several items for time certain. The first one, item D1, at 10:00 AM, is a public hearing on the proposed purchase of the Sunset Plaza Private Water and Wastewater Utility System, and establish the purchase price of this system. Item B1 at 10:15 is to approve the Tampa Bay Workforce Alliance, Inc., Doing Businesses Career Source Tampa Bay Planning Budget for Fiscal Year 22 to 23, which is required by the Federal Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. Item E1 at 10:30 is a special appearance by Santiago Carrata, President and CEO of Visit Tampa Bay, to present their quarterly activity report. Item E2 at 10:45 is a special appearance by Rob Higgins, Executive Director of the Tampa Bay Sports Commission, to present their quarterly activity report. Item B2 at 11:00 is to approve the issuance of a work order to HNTB Corporation to provide support for transportation community engagement efforts. 11:45 is a recess for lunch. Those are the changes to the agenda.
Move approval? We have a motion by Commissioner Kemp. I have a second by Commissioner Cohen. Please indicate your vote. Okay, she's going to refresh her tablet, but I hear that Commissioner Myers has voted yes, so.
With Commissioner Myers voting yes, motion carried, seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Thank you. With that, we will move on to public comment. The Board welcomes public comment for citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing input to the board members, and however it is requested, at the same time, when you address the board, that comments not be directed personally against a commissioner or a staff member, but rather directed at the issue at hand. This provides a mutual respect between the board members and the public. The Board has set aside 45 minutes in the morning immediately following the changes of the agenda for public comment. At the discretion of the chair, the Board may again hear public comment at the end of the meeting in the event we exceed that 45 minutes. Anyone who wishes to speak virtually or in person during the meeting may do so by completing the online public comment form found at hcflgov.net/speakup. The forum is open for public to sign up at 48 hours prior to the start of the meeting, and an option is also available to notify whether or not comments will be provided virtual or in person. Additionally, in-person speakers will be able to sign up at the onsite via kiosk or smartphone on the day of the meeting. For participants who wish to speak virtually who have completed the online forum, an audio call-in number is provided after the forum is received by the county, and all speakers will be required to provide their name, email address, and telephone number on the online forum. This information is requested to facilitate the public comment process. Sign-ups both virtual and in-person speaking opportunities for public hearings or public comment close at 9:00 AM as of the day of the meeting. The chair will call on the speakers in name of the order of which the requests to speak have been received. Prioritization is on a first-come, first-served basis, and the boardroom and the multipurpose room downstairs from the boardroom are designated for speakers only. Those who come to the county center to watch the meeting and not speak will be accommodated in the lobby area. Only the first 35 persons will be allowed to sign up in the boardroom for public comment. Face coverings are strongly encouraged in the boardroom, though not required, and CDC guidance strongly recommends that unvaccinated people and those with weakened immune system continue to wear masks. The multipurpose room will be available for those residents who sign up to speak after the first 35 have been registered, and speakers will be asked to exit the boardroom at the conclusion of public comment. All virtual speakers will be muted upon joining the meeting and will be unmuted after being recognized by the chair's name. Up to three minutes are allowed for each speaker, and you'll be provided a timer or indicator to give you assistance there. The first speaker that signed up to speak today regarding item B5 is Michael Jones, who's in person. Mr. Jones, you're recognized.
Good morning, Board of County Commissioners. My name is Mike Jones. I represent MidFlorida Tree Service, which is one of the two tree companies procurement has recommended to be awarded, the tree trimming and removal service contracts that are before the Board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this morning. I am speaking in response to a presentation that was made to you on June 2, 2022, by a tree company who was not awarded a contract because it submitted a non-responsive bid that failed to comply with the disadvantaged minority disadvantaged women business enterprises program requirements, and was non-responsible in its performance of the most recent contract by failing to meet the disadvantaged minority disadvantaged women participation goal. The June 2 presentation was an improper protest of its non-selection. The proper procedure for protesting the non-award of a contract is set forth in Section 2-571A of the protest ordinance. The process requires submitting a protest letter to the director of procurement, and if that is not successful, then filing an appeal to the hearing master. If the appeal fails, the bidder is responsible for costs, which are estimated to be in the $10,000 to $15,000 range. I am familiar with this process because in 2018, my client was not awarded these same contracts and had compelling arguments for why it should have been. When its protest letter was unsuccessful, my client was faced with the decision of filing an appeal. It chose not to and committed itself instead to doing a better job at the next bid solicitation. My client never considered bypassing the protest ordinance and bringing its case directly to the Board without notice or participation by procurement services or any of the other bidders. That's because whether it's in the bidding process or performing the contract it has been awarded, MidFlorida Tree Service follows the rules and honors its contracts. In closing, I'm a lawyer, and I am all for access to the courts and governing bodies. However, when a procedure is in place for challenging the award of a bid and an unsuccessful bidder declines to follow that procedure, deciding instead to plead its case directly to the Board, that decision should never be rewarded. It sets a precedent that's an invitation to chaos. Disgruntled bidders would be encouraged to bypass the potentially costly protest ordinance and go directly to the Board. It would result in bureaucratic and logistical chaos. The protest ordinance promotes transparency, uniformity, consistency, and fairness in the bid selection process. To reward a bidder who doesn't comply with the protest ordinance would adversely impact potential and competing bidders, be contrary to public policy, injure the integrity of the procurement process, and irreparably damage the public's confidence. And though you may hear something to the contrary from other speakers this morning, I want to assure the Board...
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Your time has expired, but thank you very much. Your next speaker to speak is Mr. Tim Jones.
Yes.
Maybe you can finish his sentence.
Good morning, Commissioners. Yeah, my name is Tim Jones. I am co-owner of MidFlorida Tree Service. I am here today in regards to item B5 on today's regular agenda for the award of the tree trimming and removal services contract. MidFlorida Tree Service has been servicing the Hillsborough County and Tampa Bay area for over 46 years. I have been with the company for just over 21 years. We have a proven track record of servicing large government contracts in our area, the school district of Hillsborough County, city of Tampa, Polk County, and Hillsborough County itself, to name a few. The tree trimming services contract is a very serious contract that requires a lot of time and effort and preparation to submit this bid. There are quite a few required qualifications. There is equipment, manpower, past experience, arborist and MOT certifications, safety requirements, and a commitment to subcontract a percentage of work out to certified disadvantaged minority and disadvantaged women business enterprises. All requirements we have met. We know, we all know, anyone who has ever submitted more than one tree service bid, that the quickest, easiest, and surest way not to be awarded the bid is to submit a bid that does not conform to the solicitation requirements. Therefore, any experienced tree company who claims to be shocked or blindsided because their non-conforming bid was rejected is being somewhat disingenuous. As our attorney has elaborated on, there is a protest ordinance in place that specifically explains the legal way to object a bid award. The only avenue and procedure for challenging that award is a protest letter, and if that is not successful, then filing a petition with the special master, a decision which must be made carefully because of the financial consequences if not successful. It has never occurred to us or any other company I know that we could just ignore that process and try to plead our case directly to the Board. It is understood by all of us that not only is there a certain honor, fairness to other bidders, and order to following the procedure in place, and even if reluctantly, accepting the finality of the award once all legal avenues have been exhausted, but also understand and appreciate the sheer chaos, uncertainty, and damage to the integrity of the bid process of coming before you every time our bid was not selected and attempting to have the process overturned. It's just not the way it's done. It's not playing by the rules, and most of us understand and accept that. The procedure that is in place for challenging a bid award is for the good and fairness of all bidders, as well as the citizens of Hillsborough County who are entitled to receive the benefit of the services that the contract provides in a timely fashion. In closing, and in the interest of fairness to potential and competing bidders, Hillsborough County's public policy, the integrity of the procurement process, and preserving the public's confidence, I respectfully request that the Board approve the award of the tree service contracts as recommended by the procurement department. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Your next speaker is attending virtually, Ms. Sharon Calvert on item B2. Ms. Calvert, you're recognized.
Hi, I'm Sharon Calvert, and I'm speaking on B2, asking that you oppose handing $700,000 of tax dollars to PR political consulting messaging firms, some partisan, to launch a campaign associated with a political issue, the $18 billion transit tax referendum on the November ballot. The county cannot hide such campaign behind the hiring of an engineering firm, a GTP, via a work order through their CCNA umbrella contract 21444. CCNA is governed by Florida statute 287.055 and is intended for hiring professional engineering work that requires certification by a licensed PE. The county is abusing 287.055 procuring campaign work about a referendum political issue through their umbrella CCNA. The highest paid person in the HNTB work order is the CEO of Counterpoint Messaging at $400 an hour. This is abusive use of taxpayer dollars. On April 11, prior to the April 20 public hearing to put the tax on the ballot, the county issued a solicitation letter to the seven professional engineering firms, including HNTB, procured through CCNA 21444 for campaign work predicated by the commissioners putting the tax referendum, a political issue, on the ballot. On May 4, with no prior public discussion about the campaign work, staff recommended hiring HNTB. No mention was made of any other firm who responded. We now know only one other firm of the seven solicitors responded, and that was Kimberly Horn. There was no public discussion why HNTB was selected. Today, item B2 is to hire HNTB for campaign work. Responsibility for campaigning for a political issue transit tax referendum is with the commissioners who put it on the ballot, other elected officials who support it, and its privately funded organizations or PACs who support the issue. Campaign, county campaign work associated with a political issue cannot be delegated to staff, bureaucrats, or third parties on the county's behalf. If it quacks like a duck, walks like a duck, and acts like a duck, it's a duck. Agenda item B2 is to launch a $700,000 publicly financed campaign associated with a political issue, the transit tax referendum on the November ballot. The county is walking a legal tightrope while leaning far over the rope in its efforts to skirt electioneering laws. In addition, B2 is unethical. Vote no on B2. And I also ask that consent agenda item A24 be taken off consent for discussion. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dr. James Davison, who's also attending virtually. Mr. Dr. Davison, you're recognized.
Madam Chair, Dr. Davison has not signed in.
Okay, then we'll move on to the next virtual attendee. That's Catherine Starnes, also speaking on item B2.
Hello?
You're recognized, ma'am. We can hear you.
Hello, can you... Is it ethical to vote to use, is it ethical to vote to use $700,000 of taxpayer money to hire a marketing firm to convince taxpayers to vote for a tax increase? This is a propaganda scheme. Vote no for agenda item B2. Why do you need to spend $700,000 for taxes to tell us what the state of transportation is in Hillsborough County with the cities and TPO input unless it is to campaign for the sales tax in violation of Florida statute? I know the state of transportation, and I'm in it every day. You are campaigning for high-speed trains from South Tampa to the US South area. Wouldn't it be better to spend $700,000 fixing our roads instead of selling us a sales tax to fund a high-speed train? Why do you need public relations firms to tell us about transportation? I can't believe they are telling the truth, and I don't believe you. Are they going to tell us about the county, how the county is using our property taxes to pay for county and other public employees yearly bus passes? Is anything you are doing legal? If so, who told you so, and where is our money from the last referendum, which also had a sham educational program? What about using existing record revenues and taxes to pay for fixing our roads? Jim Davison has a plan to add revenue without a new sales tax. There is no equity for the people living in unincorporated Hillsborough County. I grew up and worked in Tampa for a time, and what was the number one transportation topic? Not high-speed rail, but the awful road conditions. You need to fix our roads first. You need a population density of North City, Boston, Shanghai, and Tokyo to justify high-speed train. And please vote no for agenda item B2. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Christian Paugh, who's in person. You're recognized, sir. Please come to the podium. You have three minutes, sir.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Christian, and I'm here today with Pete Fernandez and Ron White. I represent Pete and Ron's Tree Service. Just reading through the various agenda items here today, it is clear that the county and the procurement services department is heavily invested in getting DM, DWBEs involved within the county. The fact that Hillsborough County has a targeted program, the disadvantaged minority business enterprise program, which is implemented at no cost to help DM, DWBEs is important and admirable. As a minority-owned company who has benefited from similar programs, Pete and Ron's Tree Service agrees with the policy and is also invested in bringing up DM, DWBEs. But we're here today to talk about some of the comments found within the cover sheet of agenda item B5. As we mentioned last time, Pete and Ron's Tree Service have been servicing Hillsborough County under a similar contract since 2014. The contract that Pete and Ron's Tree Service had in 2014 did not contain a DM, DWBE goal. The 5% goal was first introduced in the 2018 contract, which was awarded on August 1 of 2018. Pete and Ron's Tree Service was the first company to do this type of work to have a 5% goal. Yes, Pete and Ron's Tree Service is a high-speed, non-traffic, non-transportable, non-transportable Yes, Pete and Ron's Tree Service did not meet the 5% goal, but the important question is why? What happened during the time between 2018 until now? Well, budget cuts occurred. The budget cuts resulted in 43% of a reduction in contract expenditures, making it difficult to maintain DM, DWBE interest. Also, in March of 2020, as we all know, COVID hit, impacting us all, including businesses throughout Hillsborough County, including Pete and Ron's Tree Services. Then in January of 2021, Pete and Ron's Tree Service was informed there is no more money for this contract and will only be used for emergency services. During this time, Pete and Ron's Tree Service checked the DM, DWBE list on a monthly basis, and it was hard to find qualified DM, DWBEs. This contract has been referred to as a construction contract, but it's anything but a construction contract. A construction contract is one where the work is steady, planned, and consistent. This is a services contract, and tree services is a specialized job, which is its own thing altogether. Under a construction contract, you can predict when the work will be and plan accordingly. But the nature of this work is unpredictable. When disaster strikes, you may not be able to rely on a DM, DWBE on a moment's notice. Reading through today's agenda, it is also apparent that there are sometimes situations where there are no certified DM, DWBEs or qualified DM, DWBEs. It happens. So the 5% goal for a contract like this, it was established in 2018, and Pete and Ron's Tree Service didn't have a fair shot at meeting those goals as it dealt with unique circumstances and harsh conditions.
Thank you. The next speaker assigned to speak is Pete Fernandez, also in person. You recognize her. You have three minutes.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I am Pete Fernandez, president of Pete and Ron's Tree Service. In my 49 years in being a minority business owner, one thing I've learned is nothing comes easy. The reason I'm here today is to fight for my company, my employees, my minority subcontractors, and the taxpayers. We need to spend our hard-earned tax dollars wisely. This bidding process has eliminated us, a minority company with a certified DM, DWBE that has performed during a national pandemic, would save taxpayers $966,000. Sometimes we look at things that just don't make sense, and this is one of these things. The Gulf of County was to have a tree contract in place January 1 of this year. We are now in hurricane season with over 400 hazardous tree work orders waiting to be performed. A contract could be in place by simply extending the current contract, which still has over $2 million in value. We do not blame the current administration. They are simply following the money process. This process ignored a company that had performed the work successfully for eight years, invested over $1 million in equipment just for this contract, has a trained workforce, a management team, and a minority contractor that was certified to perform the work. Our company was deemed non-responsive after successfully and safely completing this contract. Just to be clear, in January 2019, Pete and Ron submitted Barron's Landscaping as a good faith effort for county approval and certifications. Barron's was certified. In December of 2021, Pete and Ron's received a letter deeming our company as non-responsive because Barron's wasn't certified at the time of the bid. How is this possible? Barron's had been working on this contract for two years, had been certified on every audit report in the vendor compliance system. So, here the process has eliminated Pete and Ron's, that would result in a $966,000 savings, has invested $1 million in equipment, and has personnel that are trained and ready to hit the ground running. I would like to ask today for the commissioners to help set aside this contract, to level the playing field, allow everyone to rebid this work. The board could also elect to use the remaining $2 million of the previous contract to start attacking the 400-plus work orders of hazardous trees that have been on hold in the hurricane season before it's too late. I respectfully want to thank the board for your time and consideration of this very important project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, there are several folks that have spoken regarding off-the-agenda items, or have signed up to speak on off-the-agenda items, or haven't indicated an off-the-agenda item to speak to. The first one signed up is in person, Mr. Thomas Fletcher. Thank you, Mr. Fletcher. You're recognized.
Good morning, Commissioners. Okay, it's been a while since I had a chance to come to the county center to address you folks with the pandemic and all. In fact, most of you have only seen me online a few times, yapping about zoning modifications that I didn't particularly like. So just so you know, I got over it, and I'm moving on, and there's no hard feelings about all that. Commissioners, I'm here this morning to pat you on the back for doing some good stuff. And over the last 16 years, most of this community has actually missed out on what many veterans call a remarkable transition at Veterans Memorial Park and Admiral Leroy Collins Jr. Museum. However, the lucky ones, like me, have watched our park be blessed with some beautiful memorials that came about because of the leadership climate you created between county staff and veteran volunteers from the community. I'm here today to tell you how much we appreciate your support you have given to improving this beautiful facility. Of course, your efforts to expand the Veteran Resource Center with a successful grant from the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity is again a huge show of support for veterans in our community. Now that I have buttered you up a bit, I do have a small favor. Watch out for a specific item during your budget workshops to finish the World War II memorial for us. This is the only memorial that was never completed, and the design we have in mind will add a bit of local history to this memorial. So pay attention to those workshops. I'm sure you'll have an opportunity to spend a little cash on part of the veteran park. Finally, as veterans, we understand that the boots on the ground are a big part of the effort to serve veterans. And I believe I can speak for many of my fellow advocates when I give a big shout-out to Frank Strom and his staff for doing a remarkable job serving veterans in Hillsborough County. Thanks again, and I hope to see you soon at Veterans Memorial Park.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher. I too am excited about what's happening there, so thank you very much. The next speaker that's signed up is actually attending virtually, Carolyn Smith.
Hello, I'm coming to discuss the concerns I have with Hillsborough County Parks and Recreation's actions towards youth football programs. A few weeks ago, an email was sent out to the youth football programs that are located in Parks and Rec facilities. These guidelines lift to these organizations how they need to run their programs and the months that tackle football can start. These guidelines were confirmed when a Parks and Rec representative went to a league meeting. This shows extreme government overreach. Why wasn't this offered up as a discussion with the county commissioners and residents of Hillsborough County? I would like to know why they have the authority to tell me as a taxpayer how to run a business? Why do they have the authority to say where a volunteer must be during a game? A representative from Parks and Recs also advised that football draws more crowds. I disagree with that statement, as some sports like soccer have drawn more crowds, and they apparently sit on the field and sidelines during the game. I have pictures to show this. There is one requirement that no one is arguing against, and that is safety at the field. Parks and Recs have made a requirement that the guidelines have two police officers at their fields during game days. Safety should be a concern for all youth sports, not just football, but there's only a youth football requirement. When we asked a representative about this, we were advised that it takes time to implement, but yet football was the first to have this implemented, but the last to open up during COVID reopening. The other requirement of the security is to have this scheduled by Monday before a Saturday game, and if this has not been confirmed, the games would be canceled. Parks and Recs told us that they would work with us on the timeline, but again, this is not laid out in writing, only that if this is not done, there would be no games. I received an email that the football concern risked a long-term injury due to continuous blow to the head. Again, concussions can happen in all recreational and non-recreational activities. Concussion is not just in football, and to try to say that this is a safety concern to limit youth football is alarming. So if a youth football park fails to do these requirements, is the guideline going to be enforced or a verbal "we will work with you"? Do you see the issue here? For the guidelines that were sent out, spring, month, or four flag, and summer to tackle football. I now have heard that no decision's been made yet, but again, reading this guideline that Parks and Recs sent out and hearing the word "yet," tackle football can only be done on certain months. Unless Parks and Recs retract the guideline and send out a new email to avoid this, I show that Parks and Recs wants to limit youth tackle football. Why is Parks and Recs telling me as a parent when my child can play a sport? Every other county has tackled youth football year-round, but Hillsborough County does not? Soccer and baseball have programs for spring and fall year-round. As we continue to ask Parks and Recs questions related to these guidelines, we were told that these are their parks, and we have to follow their field use agreements. That is basically Parks and Rec trying to shut down these parks if they do not follow these guidelines. The only reason you are not seeing or hearing more of these parks complain is that they fear that their leases are going to be taken. Hillsborough County residents need to hear what is happening at these youth football parks and continue to stress frustration over government overreach. Parks and Recs needs to retract these guidelines that were sent out and send some kind of clarification in writing, stop the attack on youth football. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker signed up in person is Robert Padilla. Mr. Padilla, are you available? I'm not seeing him present at this moment or coming forward to the podium. Another in-person signed up next is Portia Taylor. Ms. Taylor, please come to the podium. Thank you, you're recognized.
Good morning. Good morning, county commissioners. My name is Portia Taylor. I'm coming to you as president and athletic director of Brandon Bears Youth Football and Cheerleading, a nonprofit youth football organization here in Hillsborough County, a school, Hillsborough County Public School educator and taxpayer community member. I'm coming here today deeply concerned about the inequitable treatment of youth football programs in comparison to youth, to other youth sports programs such as lacrosse, baseball, and soccer. As you should know, there's a difference between equality and equity. As a leader of this nonprofit youth football organization that currently serves 367 youth and 103 volunteers in Hillsborough County, we are currently experiencing inadequate practice space at our current park, Providence Western River, Florida. I have been in conversations with Hillsborough County Parks and Recs since January, trying to address this. I have been met with being brushed off, being ignored, and most recently, about six emails that have gone unresponded due to overcrowding at our practice space. We are currently in season. We start June 1, as we do every year, and with these 367 kids, we are literally in an unsafe practice facility, yet there is an open practice facility complex right across the street. Again, I point out that there is a difference between equity and inequality. Yes, youth football programs have practice space. That's equality. But is it equitable? Is it equitable for an organization that has been prospering for the past four years to suffer in a small, inadequate practice space with an open practice space right across the street with no access to it? I have contacted the Hillsborough County Parks and Rec multiple times. I have been in meeting after meeting after meeting. I have only asked for access to it. I have asked to take it over. Right now, as of today, I have gotten no response. I come here today demanding equity. The Brandon Bears support safe environments for children to play. However, safety doesn't begin on Saturdays with game days. Kids spend more time at practice. All children at every organization deserve a safe environment where they aren't crowded, running into each other. Our children and families should not have to wait around for reactive decision-making and be able to enjoy proactive support from Hillsborough County to keep organizations running and children on the field. Meanwhile, we are watching other sports such as baseball, soccer, lacrosse, not get the same micromanaging guidelines that we are. Brandon Bears have met every single requirement Hillsborough has asked for us, so we are asking for Hillsborough County to provide us a safe, adequate practice field. We have met every guideline. We are prepared to meet every security guideline that is being asked for us. We are asking to be accommodated so we can continue to grow our program that not only does tackle football, we also tutor.
Thank you, ma'am. Your time has expired. The next speaker signed up to speak in person is Lonnie Mazin Jr. Thank you, Mr. Mazin. You're recognized.
Good morning. The reason I wanted to, got into coaching is to help kids. I have five beautiful children of myself, and they are also into youth sports. Today, I stand here humbly and wholeheartedly with persistent, a persistent question. Why aren't we being heard? Today, I ask the question because time and time again, we've reached out to Parks and Recs, Hillsborough County, we're not getting any answers. You know, let this be done about the situation, so that's why I'm here today. Our youth football volunteers have put in countless of hours, you know, with the children. We're doing football tutoring programs, everything that we can to make sure that our children have a safe and enjoyable environment. And some of our leaders in our youth football, you know, they're doing a lot of stuff for these kids and a lot of tutoring programs, like I said, tutoring programs, field trips, whatever they can, to try to make sure that these kids are, you know, getting what they deserve. And when I say this, I speak of the Brandon Bears. We're not, we're not getting any answers. We're not getting what we deserve. We're not getting what the kids deserve at 1,000%. So I stand here today to ask you guys, why aren't we being heard? Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker signed up to speak is Michelle Costley, if I'm saying that, is attending virtually.
Madam Chair, Michelle Costley and the next speaker, Crystal Romero, have not signed in.
Okay, thank you very much. The next person in person to speak is Michelle Fowler. Is Michelle Fowler present?
I am.
Come on. Thank you. You've come to the podium, and you're recognized, ma'am.
Good morning, and thank you for allowing me to speak. I also come to you on behalf of the Brandon Bears, as the treasurer of the Brandon Bears, a mother of a student athlete, and also as a concerned taxpayer citizen. I would like to echo everything that our president has said. I've also been able to witness firsthand some of the inequalities that youth football has suffered. I actually stayed right behind the park that she's referring to and have been able to see soccer programs and other programs be able to thrive and utilize those fields without a lot of backlash and different things like that. I do believe in chain of command. I do believe in doing the right thing, and I believe that the Brandon Bears has followed the chain of command. We started, you know, with the lowest person within the Parks and Recs and had to build our way up and also reached out to our county officials and helped for this. What we're currently seeing right now is we're not being helped. There's not a collaborative relationship between the counties and some of the organizations that service the student athletes of our community. As our president stipulated, we not only worry about football, but we also have a thriving tutoring program, and we're not being able to utilize the resources of some of our fields that taxpayers are paying for. Some of these fields are going and sitting empty for long periods of time, and I would just ask why. We want to hold our county commissioners, as well as our Parks and Recreation Department, accountable for helping us service our 367 children, as well as our volunteers, and we just ask for more of a collaborative relationship, not an adversarial relationship, so that we can continue to thrive and make Hillsborough County student athletes the best that they can be. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. The next speaker to speak is attending virtually, Erica Diaz. Is Ms. Diaz available?
Yes, ma'am.
Excellent. You're recognized, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is Erica Diaz. Good morning. My name is Erica Diaz. I'm also speaking on a youth football issue with Parks and Recreation and their continuous stagnant procrastination on ensuring safety of football youth groups. I'm also part of the Brandon Bears organization located in Providence Park. As our athletic director has advised, our organization has been attempting to finalize a resolution with Parks and Recreation for months without any resolve. The resolution is to go to a bigger and safer complex that can both accommodate our registered students and their families. This organization is currently the biggest youth and football organization in the county with a registered 365 students. This organization has a prestigious track record of outstanding student athletes, based in parts of the organization's rules and bylaws with strict regulations pertaining to academics and conduct. As mentioned, our organization has been in a stagnant conversation to relocate. I personally, myself, have tried to reach out to Parks and Recreation. I've had previous issues in the past with some of their leadership and their constant mistreatment towards. mistreatment towards youth, pardon me, youth football, especially minority-based youth football programs, and no resolve as well. So before I conclude, I just want Parks and Recreation to envision this. Envision having a three-bedroom, two-bath household with about a 1,500-foot square face. Now envision dropping 365 student athletes found there with about 200 parents and coaches and about 300 vehicles. Tell them to work out, tell them to run 20, 40-yard dashes, tell them to do stuff. Now explain to me how that fits. If safety is always the issue and student development and progress is always the issue, which I believe it is, because we just had a complete ceremony this morning on outstanding student athletes, why are student athletes that are excelling in honor roll and academics not being honored and not being assisted? So I'm asking Commissioner's office to please step up on this matter. Please provide some urgency on the matter because it is an unsafe environment for a bunch of people. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Willie Dixon Jr. Communications, Mr. Dixon has put two things on the Elmo. Is that what that thing is called, an Elmo? Welcome, Mr. Dixon.
Good morning, Commissioners. I do bring your greetings and blessings in the magnificent name of Messiah Jesus, who say you shall know the truth and the truth shall make you free. And I know outside, we had a lot of things going on, but I want to give you the other side of Juneteenth. In my hand, I have a Constitution. The Constitution starts off saying all men are created equal. It did not include women or folks that look like me. And we celebrated in Juneteenth. And you know, Juneteenth started January the 1st, 1860, 1863, and we know in Galveston, Texas, June the 19th, 1885. That was the ending of slavery and the beginning of Amendment 13. What is Amendment 13? It says that you can no longer use black folks for free labor, so we're going to start putting you in jail. And I know now, we, as a mayor, we represent 7% of the Florida population, and we represent over 40 to 50% of the prison population. So what does Juneteenth mean to the homeless in Tampa? I see people on the streets in Tampa, but yet we send $40 million to other countries. And I see people that's living in Silver Oak and other apartments, and the Hertz document says that you shall live in safe, sanitary, and decent facilities, but we don't have that. See, safe and decent in housing really matters, just as our votes matter. And this year, I had to pay $7,000 in income tax, so I pay my taxes. So what I'm saying to each of you, I want you to realize today, because I've heard it said, well, I wasn't born then when all of this happened. You may not have been born, but you are benefiting from everything that happened to the people that made America great. And then I want you to also know, and I have the statistics, because my friend Robin Lockett said, do you have proof? I have proof of everything I say. Do you know that we have more hate crimes in organizations now than we did in 1863? It only is going to change when people that look like you talk to your neighbors, you go to your, your synagogues, you go to your churches and all of your places and your bars, you need to let them know, we have to start treating all people right. And then Juneteenth will really have some significance. And then you can also listen to the words of, of Dr. King, who says, you shall know the truth and the truth shall make you free.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon.
And you can say, free at last, free at last. Thank God almighty, I'm free at last because Juneteenth is now in the heart of every American person, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. I appreciate that. The next speaker who's here in person, I believe, is Brenda Williams. Is Brenda Williams present?
Good morning. How y'all doing?
Good morning, Ms. Williams. You're recognized.
Hi, my name is Brenda Williams. I'm just here with the Brandon Bears. Our president really said enough. I have 21 grandkids, okay? I've been in the organization over 25 years. And when I hear everybody say we don't care about safety, I have a problem with that because I can tell you just about every principal in Hillsborough County know me, especially when it comes to my kids. So I just want to say that we need your guy, we need your help. We got all these kids out here and we got to support them, and we don't have nobody supporting us. So can you please just look at what's on the agenda today and try to help us out? We need help with our kids. We don't even have bathrooms for our cheerleaders. I mean, we, we need help, and you guys are not helping us. So please, please, just look at the agenda and try to help us out. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. The next speaker is also here in person is Anthony Housing, and that's the last speaker that's, that's signed up to speak. Is Mr. Housing available? I'm not seeing anyone come to the podium. Mr. Housing? Or Anthony? Okay. That's the last speaker I have signed up for speaking during the public comment period. At this point, if your comments have been heard, the, those that have spoken in public comment are asked to leave the boardroom. And with that, we'll move to our regular agenda, or actually, the items on the agenda.
Excuse me?
Yes. I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand. I apologize.
That's okay.
Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Before, before they leave the boardroom, I think we should just, I'd like to just ask Ms. Wise, can we further look at this and have a report back to the board about exactly what the, what is happening there? And I'd like to just reassure anyone who is still here or watching that we will be doing that and looking at this situation. Ms. Wise?
Yes, of course.
And you're referring to the Parks and?
Yes, I am. I'm referring to all the park issues that were raised with regard to the park and the Brandon Bears in River View and, and what, what the situation is there so that we learn and hear more and come and understand better what the issues are.
I concur with that, so, thank you very much. Thank you very much. I see Commissioner White, you're in the queue.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There's also been this issue of fall season versus spring season play of football. I think that was mentioned today by one of the speakers. If you could include that in the report to the board as well, I'd sure appreciate it.
We sure will.
Thank you.
I know, I know Mr. Valdez sent a memo, but there seems like there's more follow-up needed.
Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Yes, I just want to add, I had already reached out to my staff to ask for more information on the issue that the Brandon Bears' parents were, were concerned about, and the idea that there's this field right across the street that is being underutilized and might be able to be used by them. I really like more information on that as well, so thank you.
And I also want to bring up that there's an issue associated with timing. Our next board meeting is until July 20th. It's halfway through the summer season, and with 300 and something children not able to actually participate or participate in their, in their activities as a consequence of this opportunity to find a better solution, I look forward to seeing something at least distributed to the board as quickly as possible. Commissioner Myers, you're recognized.
And thank you, Madam Chair. Of all those that spoke this morning regarding the Brandon Bears, no one mentioned of the shooting that occurred out at Skyway that has led to a lot of the decisions that Rick Valdez had to make in moving some of the football teams around. And safety is number one when we have so many children at our facilities. We can talk about what we are planning and how we want to be at the facilities, but we're not talking about how do we keep our children safe. And there were some shootings at, on December 11th at the Skyway. And so the field that they're talking about now in Brandon is under investigation with another one of the leagues that Rick is working on. I have been in communication, we're talking with the Brandon Bears as well as another team and seeing how we can help. So it's not going unnoticed, okay?
Excellent. Thank you, Commissioner Myers. Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Wise, for being able to bring that back to us as quickly as possible so we can get this addressed as we're in the middle of the season, as we heard earlier. Okay, with that, we will move on to the consent items removed for a separate vote or highlighting accommodation. Ms. Wise, do you want to introduce that?
That was item A4, and that was pulled for highlighting by you, Madam Chair.
By me, so, okay, great. Many of you know that we've been working on this for a while. I am so proud and so excited that this item was actually on our consent agenda, so it's not necessarily going to be discussed as part of our regular agenda, but I couldn't go without thanking our Affordable Housing Director, Cheryl Howell, Nancy Takamori, our legal counsel, and the incredible team in the Affordable Housing Department, ENU, for their outstanding work and dedication to bring to us for approval the Community Land Trust and bring it into fruition. The Community Land Trust will complement the current housing provider system that we have in place and are expanding and expand other affordable housing opportunities while enhancing economic and racial inclusion efforts that will, are oftentimes overlooked in the, in private developments. This is another exciting and progressive step towards assisting community members with home ownership. It also, I want to thank all of you again for the incredible staff that has allowed this to happen and allowed us to approve this today on the, on the consent agenda. So with that, I will, you do what you like to do.
Well, you can just leave, put it back on consent.
So we'll put it back on the consent agenda. We have a motion by Commissioner Kemp and a second by Commissioner Myers. So this is actually the consent agenda entirely. It's not necessarily just A4, which is shown on the screen.
For the consent agenda, motion carried, seven to zero.
Excellent, thank you very much. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. We can now move on to our 10:00 AM public hearing. This is item D1. This is to propose purchase of the Sunset Plaza Private Water and Wastewater Utility System. Beth Chenella, Director of Water Operations, is here for this item.
Thank you, Ms. Bonnie. Good morning, Commissioners. Beth Chenella, Director of Water Resources Department. Item D1 is a public hearing on the proposed purchase of the Sunset Plaza Private Water and Wastewater Utility Franchise for $210,000. A request for authorization to pursue closure on the purchase and approval of the resolution stating that the purchase is in the public's best interest. This franchise is one of two remaining franchises within the county service area. It is a small franchise consisting of 39 water and 36 wastewater commercial connections. Customers' current monthly rates will be slightly less than what they are currently paying, and this is a public hearing.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry?
Nobody has signed up to speak in this hearing.
No, I don't, as, as this is a public hearing, seems we do not have anyone speaking here from the board or here, consider a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Move approval by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Cohen. Please indicate your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Excellent, thank you very much. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. We can now move to the item B1, our 10:15 item. This is to approve the Tampa Bay Workforce Alliance Doing Business as Career Source Tampa Bay's Planning Budget for 2022-23. Ron Barton, Assistant County Administrator for Economic Prosperity, is here. We also have John Flanagan of Career Source here to answer any questions and to talk about their plans.
Excellent, thank you very much. Mr. Barton, you're recognized.
Good morning, Commissioners. Again, Ron Barton, and pleased to be with you this morning. This is item B1, to approve Tampa Bay Workforce Alliance, Inc., DBA, Career Source Tampa Bay Planning Budget for FY 2022-23, excuse me, in the amount of $22,718,926 as required by the Federal Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. And as the board, you're acting as the chief local elected official in this capacity with US DOL. As Ms. Wise mentioned, we have CEO of Career Source, John Flanagan, as well as CFO Sheila Doyle. And I've asked John just to make some summary comments about the agenda item to give you some perspective on it, and then, of course, we're all available to answer any questions. John?
Thank you, Mr. Barton. Mr. Flanagan, you're recognized.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Barton, and thank you, Commissioners, for your time. Just a little historical background, Career Source Tampa Bay has served as the administrative entity and fiscal agent for federal workforce funds in Hillsborough County since 2000 and has continuously acted in these roles in that time under an agreement between the Board of County Commissioners and Career Source Tampa Bay defining the duties and responsibilities to administer and operate workforce development programs in Hillsborough County. The most recent interlocal agreement was approved by the Board of County Commissioners on June 3 of 2021. The planning or projected budget of expected revenues is for the fiscal year, which runs July of 2022 through June of 2023. This planning budget is presented in a standardized format provided by Career Source Florida and used by all other 24 workforce regions in the state. These revenues are based on projections provided by the state to Career Source Tampa Bay and are based on federal allocations, again, administered through the Federal Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, made up of a, of a, of a pretty complex formula which includes local economic conditions, unemployment, percentage of people living in poverty, things, things along those lines. The fiscal year 2022-23 planning budget shows projected revenues of $22,718,926, which is a decrease of about $550,000 from the last fiscal year. Do want to note that approximately 90% of our, our projected expenditures are direct programs cost for ongoing workforce programs and/or special grants and projects. So these costs include salaries and benefits of staff working directly with employer, employers and customers, direct training costs for participants and job seekers, and facilities, technology, and outreach costs for our various career centers. This planning budget has been reviewed and approved by the Career Source Tampa Bay Board of Directors at our annual meeting held on May 19 of this year. And in compliance with the federal WIOA guidelines and the agreement between Hillsborough County and Career Source Tampa Bay, this planning budget is being presented to the Board of County Commissioners as the chief local elected official for approval. Again, as Mr. Barton said, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Flanagan. Are there any questions from the board?
Move approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, a second by Commissioner Myers. Seeing no further comments, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Excellent, thank you very much. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. Our next item is item E1. This is a special appearance by Santiago Carata, President and CEO, a visit Tampa Bay to present their quarterly activity report.
Excellent, thank you very much. Mr. Carata, please welcome.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Honorable County Commissioners, the Steadland County Administrator, Ms. Wise.
Can you, Communications, can you raise his volume a little? Thank you.
Can you hear me? Is that better?
That's much better, thank you.
Thank you. Again, good morning to all. It's always a pleasure to appear before you, especially with good news to share, actually great news to share, but before I get into some of those numbers in our presentation, I want to say thank you. Thank you to each and every one of you. You're out there with us, welcoming groups to town, bidding on groups. I want to thank, obviously, our county administrator, Ms. Wise, Greg Horwiddo, who serves on our board, and Ron Barton and their teams for working with us each and every day to produce the numbers I'm going to share with you this morning, and this is a collective effort, and so we should all be very, very proud of these numbers. So if we could pull up the presentation, I'd really appreciate it from your great IT team there. This is our quarter two fiscal year presentation. Next slide, please, that represent numbers, actual numbers for January through March, and these are Smith Travel Research, Inc., actual numbers. And you see there some outstanding percentage increases when compared to 2021, when we were actually starting to see recovery. So as I get into some of these numbers, more specifically, next slide. So as I get into some of these numbers, more specifically, next slide, you will see how occupancy compares year over year, and what's really deceiving about this chart here and even some of the ones that are coming, is when you look at fiscal year 20 quarter two, people say, well, wow, we were in the pandemic. We were in the beginning of the pandemic, and we had actually experienced a record-setting January and February, and first half of March was also record-setting back in fiscal year 20 quarter two. So it's a little deceiving because we weren't really in to the teeth of the pandemic back in that fiscal year. We'll see that in quarter three in our next presentation, and you see there fiscal year 21 quarter two, you know, the recovery from what we had been through from April through January of the prior fiscal year, and then you see our numbers here for quarter two, January through March of '22. Next slide, when we look at average daily rates, you see the best average daily rate quarter, really, in our history. When you look at the actual collections that are happening and the average daily rate that hotels are charging for rooms in Hillsborough County. Next slide, please. When you look at revenue for all available rooms, if all of our rooms were full and we divided the income, the revenue, this is what all those rooms would bring in for the quarter, again, a record-setting quarter compared to prior quarters, and we like to go back to '19 to show when things were quote-unquote "normal" before the pandemic. Next slide. And when you look at total revenue for the quarter, January through March, that is just outstanding. When we talk about, in the past, the benchmark to be a high-impact tourism destination, as defined by the state being $600 million, and in three months, we're almost at $301 million, that is really saying something about what's happening, and, you know, I'd be remiss if I didn't say that, yes, these numbers are phenomenal, but the industry's still grappling with some pandemic-related issues and global issues. First and foremost, the cost of goods due to inflation and supply chain interruptions, labor shortages, so, yes, the industry is doing well, but still grappling with some global implications on a day-in-and-day-out basis. Next slide, please. When we look at our competitive set for the quarter, and you look at our occupancy, it is the best amongst, you know, just some incredible destinations. If we go to the next slide and we look at average daily rates, also near the top, very, very competitive, and again, you know, it's a tough comp set that we work against here as defined by the industry, so, again, doing very well. And then the next slide, obviously, revenue per available room, again, puts us in a great position compared to those destinations, and, again, these are actual numbers, January through March, which represents our quarter two of our fiscal. Next slide, please. So when we look at revenues, hotel taxable revenue collected for the quarter, it is that they represent December, January, February, actual collections in the hotels, again, record-setting pace for the quarter, and I can tell you, we've already seen March and April, that'll be in our next quarterly report, those were record-setting, so I'm hoping that when I present our next quarter, you'll see numbers that are equally as impressive or maybe even a little bit more because we've seen a very, very strong March and April. Next slide, please. And when you look at the hotel tourism tax that's being collected at hotel properties and submitted to our county, again, you see just a very, very strong quarter two, representing collections in those properties for December, January, February, that represent January, February, March, because that's when they're booked in the county. Next slide, please. So we've had some incredible campaigns that have contributed to these numbers, our digital campaign, overall digital campaign, revenue to date, fiscal year to date, over $32 million, 162,000 room nights booked, and what's equally impressive is the average daily rates for those rooms, almost $2,000. I would love to share where people are flying to from the country to our destination. You see there Chicago, Boston, Newark, Philadelphia, New York, and our top hotel origin markets where hotels are being booked, you see those there at the top as well. Next slide. And a subset of that is our online travel agency campaigns, working with media partners, Expedia, Priceline Kayaks, Agerne, and Adara. You see there, again, $28.5 million in hotel bookings and 108 times the return on the ad spend, and this is all quantifiable, data-driven, through these operators that work with us, these third-party operators, so, again, doing extremely well. Next slide is our new video. Love to share that new destination video with you. I hope it'll play. Next slide, please. For years, we've been focused on diversity, equity, and inclusion LGBTQ+ audiences. Well, we've also now pivoted over the last several years to travelability and accommodations, and this is one of our influencers that really speaks to what a great destination we have here for our disabled population, and so, again, you know, the evolution of our marketing continues. Our next slide speaks to our Tampa River Walk Pass. We launched a city pass some years ago that looked at our attractions regionally. Well, with all of the excitement downtown and some of our smaller attractions not being a part of the city pass, we created the Tampa River Walk Pass with a company named Van Lango, and it's doing extremely well, and those attractions downtown benefit from, you know, attendance and percentage of the sales of the tickets, so we're very, very happy to be able to support, you know, these institutions that are smaller but very, very important for us as a destination. I believe that's my last slide. Again, thank you, thank you, thank you. I see you, and we're together often outside of these quarterly reports, and, of course, again, thank you to our county team that worked with us every single day to produce these numbers and this incredible destination. Open to any questions, Madam Chair, or I see my good friend Rob Higgins on camera, so I'm here to answer anything, and then really happy to see Rob on camera.
Thank you, Mr. Carrada. I will tell you, thank you very much for the $50 million worth of revenues coming back to the county to be able to invest in supporting our economics and supporting our communities that are providing the world with a great view of the great opportunities we have here in the Tampa Bay area, so thank you very much for your work. Ms. Wise, I'll let you do the next item.
Thank you, and now we will turn it over to Rob Higgins, the Executive Director of the Tampa Bay Sports Commission, and Rob will present their quarterly activity report. This is item E2.
Good morning, Rob, welcome. And, by the way, go Bolts!
That's right. Had to do the virtual background in honor of the big game won tonight. Similar to Santiago, certainly want to start off with a sincere thank you to the entire county commission, as well as Administrator Bonnie Wise, Ron Barton, and the whole team in terms of all of your support, certainly has been integral to the overall success of sports tourism and sports commission here, the sports commission here, and we could not be more appreciative. I've got a quick report I wanted to take you through related to recent as well as upcoming events and share all the great things that are happening with our organization, so if you don't mind pulling up the presentation and taking us to the next slide. In March, we were fortunate to host the SEC Men's Basketball Tournament. You hit the next slide as well. That was our first time hosting since 2009. We surpassed the 100,000 attendance mark at Amalie Arena. Tennessee took home the championship, but I think the real win here was with our local economy. I'll do my best Santiago impression because I have some great hotel analytics to share related to that event. I'm going to give you the countywide numbers. Certainly, the downtown analytics when it comes to hotels were incredible, really the highest since Super Bowl in 2021, but countywide occupancy saw a 26% increase over the five days of the event. Rate nearly doubled from $191. It went to $191 from $110. Demand went from 92,000 room nights to 118,000 room nights, which is a 31% increase. And then my favorite number really relates to the revenue. The year prior was about $10 million in hotel revenue throughout the county for those five days. For the SEC tournament, it was $23 million, so an increase of basically 127%. So certainly a huge win for our community and a great event. So what's next or what's in store for us here this upcoming August? If you take us to the next slide, we'll preview a great event that we have coming, which is the U.S. Gymnastics National Championships, take place at Amalie Arena from August 18 through the 21st. If you hit the next slide, we've got a great video that'll get everybody excited with that upcoming event. This is the first time that anywhere in the southeast has hosted this event since 2004. We anticipate between 30,000 and 35,000 attendees over the four nights of the event. It's on national television on NBC, so we're going to get some great marketing visibility from that standpoint. And then also, in addition to these world-class athletes and fans that are coming, it's also their national congress, so similar to like with the Women's Final Four, where we have the WBCA Convention, the Women's Basketball Coaches Association Convention, and then similar to the NCAA Division One Volleyball Championship, where we have the American Volleyball Coaches Association. This is really a two-for-one where we get not only great competition but also a great convention in conjunction with it. Next slide. We're also officially on the clock for the NCAA Men's Frozen Four. That'll be our third time hosting. If you hit the next slide as well, we just were in Boston this past early April where we had a promo booth in the concourse there. I can tell you, talking to thousands of fans, they are so excited to make their return to our community. It'll be their first time since 2016 being back here. We've got a lot of meetings coming up related to it, as well as a site visit this fall, but I can tell you, the fans are really pumped up to make their return to our community. Speaking of great NCAA championships, if you take us to the next slide, you may have seen the news just this past week. Our community was named one of seven finalists to host a future Women's Final Four. Next slide. You may recall, we are already, we've already had the great pleasure of hosting 2008 and 2015 and 2019, and then we're already on the schedule for 2025, and now, as I mentioned, we're finalists for 2027 through 2031. In terms of timeline, our final bid is due at the end of this month. We've already submitted a variety of different informational documents leading up to this point, but the bids due end of this month. We'll then have a site visit here this fall with the NCAA delegation, and then a final presentation, and then we'll find out who will host those years a little later on in the fall as well. So as you know, we judge success of events on if they decide to come back, and the fact that we've had our, got our fourth Women's Final Four coming back, and maybe and hopefully a fifth one, just shows how successful the event has been, and again, that's a huge testament to your support. Next slide. Speaking of great women's sports initiatives, this upcoming week, June 23, it's the 50th anniversary of Title IX. You think about how much that legislation has impacted all of our lives and just the incredible impact it's had on society. We are one of four cities that were picked by ESPN to have a screening of their 50/50 docu-series, and that's going to take place at Amalie Arena on the night of June 23. The other three cities that were selected are New York, LA, and Dallas, so certainly a great class that we're included in there. For those that are interested in attending, we've sent invitations, but then if you have others that would like to, or if anybody's listening would like to come out to it, you can log on to beyondbarriers2022.com to join us for that special evening celebrating the 50th anniversary of Title IX. And then finally, these next few slides, I just wanted to share the success of the youth and amateur sports market has been fantastic. From a room night standpoint, just through the first two quarters, if you flip to the next slide, you can see some of the great events that we've recently hosted and then have upcoming. The room nights for the first two quarters were just around 124,000, just over 124,000 room nights from 33 different events. And again, that's just through six months of the fiscal year. Obviously, a huge part of that ties into the next slide and my final slide, which is the Hillsborough County Sports Tournament Complex. When you look at facilities like this, a lot of them are built off of projections, some of which end up coming true, some of which don't. I've got some great news to conclude with. When, before you guys green-lighted this project, the Hillsborough County Tournament Sportsplex through three and a half years was projected to do about 88,000 room nights across those three and a half years. Well, fast forward to today, three and a half years later, we've already surpassed the 100,000 room night mark, and that includes, for the first six months of this fiscal year, we've hosted 19 events there that have resulted in 45,971 room nights. So it's really a testament to your vision. I'll end the same way that I started with a thank you. Thank you for believing in the power of sports tourism. Hopefully, these numbers make you proud, and I can tell you, the return on investment continues to be tremendous. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Rob, for that fabulous presentation and sharing all the wonderful events that we have an opportunity to celebrate. It sounds like the Tampa Bay area and all the efforts between the two organizations are sticking it really well, so looking forward to the gymnastics. With that, I'm going to recognize Commissioner Kemp and then Commissioner Hagan.
I just wanted to say it's just very, very impressive, so thank you so much. It's great to see you bringing in so much, or the Sporting Commission, Sports Commission, to bring in so much to the Tampa Bay area, and it's really impressive, especially when you say, no one in the southeast since 2004, to give those kinds of, that kind of information about it. Very, very great job.
Excellent. Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say, Rob, you're doing an incredible job, and thank you again for you and everything you and your staff do for, to keep the hotels packed each and every weekend, and as the commissioner who championed the tournament sportsplex, I can't thank you enough for having that place jammed every weekend. I know you've told me that it's the talk of the industry as far as the fields and the entire complex, and just want to say, I'm very proud of the work you're doing, and keep up the great job. Thank you.
Thank you. And the economic driving that's occurring between not only our national, you know, sports industry, but our local and our collegiate, I can't... you know, sports industry, but our local and our collegiate, I can't, I love having the NCAA women's, you know, tournaments here. So I hope that is successful and look forward to seeing more to the future. It's been a very worthwhile investment all the way around in terms of helping our economy and helping create jobs in our economy. So thank you very much for your work, sir. I'm not seeing any other comments. With that, Ms. Wise, thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is item B2. This is our 11 o'clock. This is to approve the issuance of the work order to H N T B for the transportation community engagement efforts. And Greg Horwiddell, Deputy County Administrator, will begin the presentation as well as John Lyons. We do have representatives from H N T B available if the board should have any questions. As a reminder, this was an item that was deferred from the last meeting.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Mr. Lyons? Or, or Mr. Horwiddell, who is going first here?
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. Good morning. For the record, my name is Greg Horwiddell, Deputy County Administrator of Hillsborough County. I have a brief introduction of this item before I turn it over to Assistant County Administrator John Lyons for more detail. Item B2 authorizes issuance of a work order to H N T B to implement and design a community engagement program for the county's transportation surtax issue. The board authorized to appear on the upcoming ballot in November of 2022. As you've heard from county staff and representatives from the cities of Tampa, Temple Terrace, and Plant City, from Heart Transportation Planning Organization, several workshops and public meetings, the county and our municipalities have significant unmet transportation needs. This effort is necessary to ensure staff has the professional expertise to coordinate information from multiple jurisdictions and agencies to inform residents about our transportation needs throughout Hillsborough County and respond to inquiries about those needs. When dealing with different data sources and programming schedules used by our various municipal and agency partners, it is important that the overall transportation needs throughout the county be presented as transparently and comprehensively as possible. H T and B has demonstrated their ability to perform this essential task. However, H D and, H N T B will not be operating in a vacuum. They will perform their work in conjunction with staff from the county and from our partners. I want to make it clear that we have been following and will continue to follow the requirements of recently signed legislation, House Bill 921, that governs how information related to tax referendums may be provided. H N T B also will be required to follow the rules set forth in House Bill 921. Toward that end, staff has consulted with the county attorney's office and met with our partners on how to present data and answer questions about our transportation surtax issue on the upcoming November ballot. County Attorney's Office has provided good counsel and sound advice to staff regarding the boundaries established by House Bill 921. House Bill 921 is clear about the limits about how the county as a local government may provide information. While individual commissioners and private organizations may choose to weigh in directly on the transportation surtax issue, neither staff nor H N T B may engage in advocacy. Staff will stay within those boundaries. We will continue to consult with the county attorney as H N T B performs the tasks specified in their scope of services. With that very brief overview in mind, I'll turn it over to John Lyons. John?
Thank you. John Lyons, Assistant County Administrator for Public Works. Commissioners, again, we're asking you to approve the issuance of a work order to H N T B Corporation for transportation community engagement efforts not to, not to exceed amount of $699,958.35 for these services, which will be on an as-needed basis. This work will include the development and implementation of a community engagement program that informs and responds to inquiries about the current state of transportation in Hillsborough County across all those local agencies, as Greg described earlier. H N T B has committed to use subconsultants for 40% of the work, and 20% of those services will be performed by D W B E certified consultants. Funding will come from non, from countywide, non-departmental allotments. Again, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and we do have folks from H N T B available if necessary.
Thank you, John, and thank you, Greg, very much for making those presentations and making it very clear that our goal is to be as transparent as possible, to follow the guidelines, to make sure we're meeting the state statute in terms of how we communicate this to taxpayers, and to take on the responsibility of communicating to our taxpayers what it is that they will be considering in the fall. So I thank you for your efforts in putting this together.
Move approval?
We have a motion approval by Commissioner Kemp, a second by Commissioner Myers. Not seeing any other further discussion, please indicate your vote.
Motion carried five to one. Commissioner White voted no.
Okay. Thank you very much. And for the record, we'll indicate that Commissioner Hagan's not in the room. Thank you. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. We can now move to the regular agenda. Our first item, and we have several procurement items. So Mr. Scott Stromer, Director of Procurement Services, will take us through these. The first one is item B3. This is to authorize the new countywide fire station alerting system. And for, it's a new state-of-the-art system for our 48 fire stations. And as was previously mentioned, this was funded by the board by the American Rescue Plan dollars. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Stromer.
Mr. Stromer, you're recognized.
Good morning. Scott Stromer, Procurement Services. Item B3 is asking the board to authorize the use of pricing from an available contract awarded to U.S. Digital Designs Incorporated, or U S D D, by the League of Oregon Cities and administered by the National Purchasing Partnership, or what we call M P P G O, for a new countywide fire station alerting system and associated support for the Fire Rescue Department at a total cost of $4,110,855.57. Resulting work involves a four-and-a-half-year effort to migrate the existing fire station alerting system to a new state-of-the-art system that will serve 48 fire stations throughout the county. To the credit of the Fire Rescue, excuse me, to the credit of the Fire Rescue Department, U S D D has agreed to use a minority business enterprise registered with the state of Virginia, Honey Mac Security Incorporated, as the lead installer of the system in the amount of $1,5223.40, or approximately 24.45% of the total project costs. For its part, Honey Mac will endeavor to further subcontract work to disadvantaged business enterprise firms that are registered with Hillsborough County during the course of the project. And with that, Procurement Services does recommend approval.
So moved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Myers, right? Or Commissioner Cohen? I'm sorry. Commissioner Cohen, please record your vote.
Motion carried six to zero.
Ms. Wise?
Thank you. The next item is item B4. This is for design build services associated with the expansion of the South County Advanced Water Treatment Facility. Mr. Stromer will present this item as well.
Item B4 is asking the board to select a warden and execute an agreement with the highest-ranked and best-qualified firm, Warden Smith Incorporated, for design build services associated with expansion of the South County Advanced Wastewater Treatment Facility for the Water Resources Department at a total cost of $66,975,584.33. This project consists of the design permitting, construction, testing, startup, and turnover of the expanded and upgraded facilities needed to increase the capacity of the existing facility from a 10 million gallons per day to a 13 million gallons per day. A disadvantaged business enterprise participation goal of 12% was established for this project, and the recommended vendor has committed to achieving this goal. Complex projects like this often include differing site conditions and latent deficiencies that are unknown until they're discovered during the course of the design and construction. To mitigate these and other conditions to keep this critical project on schedule, the award amount includes several allowances to accommodate additional work if deemed necessary during the course of the project. The original estimate for this project was approximately $68 million. However, bids exceeded over $100 million due primarily to an extraordinary increase in the cost of major construction materials and labor. To keep this project moving, several elements that were included in the original project have since been identified as optional and may be added back depending on the project's progress in a manner that won't hinder timely completion. The Procurement Services Department does recommend approval.
Thank you very much. The board's pleasure?
So moved.
Okay. Move approval by Commissioner Kemp, a second by Commissioner Cohen and Smith. Please indicate your vote.
Motion carried six to zero.
Ms. Wise?
Thank you. The next item is item B5. This is awarding contracts for as-needed tree trimming and removal services. This item had been deferred from consent from this last meeting, as well as you have had various public comment regarding this item. And Mr. Stromer can provide some background and present this item as well.
Mr. Stromer, you're recognized. Thank you.
Thank you. Item B5 is asking the board to award three-year contracts to the two lowest overall responsible bidders by service area for ongoing and as-needed tree trimming and removal services throughout the county for the Engineering and Operations Department at a total cost of $10,577. Before I get to the recommendation, I want to take a few moments just to address the comments from representatives from Pete and Ron's Tree Service this morning and at the last meeting, and assure the board that the recommendation for award is appropriate, prudent, and fully complies with the county's procurement policy, longstanding minority disadvantaged business development operational procedures, and the protest ordinance. The county's procurement policy requires awards from the lowest responsive and responsible bidders who meet the requirements and criteria set forth in the invitation for bids. The first element, Pete and Ron's was found to be non-responsible and non-responsive. The nonresponsibility determinations stem from the previous contract, which, to be clear, the award to Pete and Ron's in August of 2018 expressly and clearly required a disadvantaged business enterprise participation goal of 5%. They did not achieve that goal. They only achieved about 1.3%. Approximately $6.8 million was paid out to Pete and Ron's under that contract between 2018 and 2021. The board remembers in 2020, we extended most contracts by a year to give the contractors some security during the pandemic. So they actually had a three-year contract instead of just two years, but still with the additional year did not meet the goal. Of the $6.8 million that's been paid out, Pete and Ron's was obligated subcontract approximately $340,000 to their disadvantaged business enterprise partner. However, the MBE Division reports that only approximately 88,000 or 1.3% was paid to their disadvantaged business enterprise partner, or partners in this case, which is approximately $251,000 less than what was required. The participation goals are intended to help disadvantaged businesses grow and become more economically sustainable, and failures to meet these goals undermines that effort and adversely impacts the disadvantaged business enterprises involved. County staff, namely the MBE Division and Procurement Services Department, are committed to ensuring that the promises made by prime vendors are satisfied and that the minority and disadvantaged businesses are treated fairly inequitably, which is why we take enforcement of these goals very seriously. When a goal is set for 5% in this case, if a vendor cannot meet that goal for whatever reason, pandemic or there's not enough vendors, there is a mechanism that they need to work with economic development, in this case, the MBE Division, to document their good faith efforts. They did not document those efforts. They were not, did not file the reports in timely fashion, and quite frankly, kind of ignored staff when they made calls to that firm. The Economic Development Department monitors those contracts to make sure that they stay on track. If they aren't, they're reaching out to the vendors, figuring out how we can get them on track, certainly for the benefit of the subcontractors. And that was, and the MBE Division reports that that didn't occur. But at the end of the day, they did not meet the goal, and it was a contractual obligation. That was a material condition of that contract. The second reason, they were deemed non, they were deemed non-responsive, which was the second reason for the rejection. The firm that they listed, which was Barron's Landscaping, was not properly certified as a disadvantaged business with economic development at the time the bids were opened. Back in 2019, this firm was granted a one-time provisional reciprocal certification that is only good for six months. During that six months, they are just like any other certified firm, and they can take on as many contracts as they want. And in this case, Pete and Ron's, they were certified, Pete and Ron's used this firm, and that relationship stays through the end of the contract. So it lasted for the three years. But when they are given that, that provisional certification, they are notified in writing by a letter, letting them know that the condition of this one-time provisional is only good for six months, and that you've got to register and go through the application process and be vetted and become properly certified if you want to continue participating in the program. In addition, every solicitation, including the one we're talking about now, includes also that language about reciprocity and what those limitations are. So it is clearly communicated of what the rules are. And unfortunately, Barron's did not go through that process, and they made themselves certified or went through that process approximately a month after the bids opened. Another problem here is, obviously, it's the protest process. Every vendor is given due process, just like all of them. The board, you know, we've been involved in some of these as it goes from hearing master to actually appealing to the board. The protest process in this case, anytime we reject a vendor, the vendor is notified in writing, and they're given five days to rebut that or protest that decision. In this case, the note of the rejection based on nonresponsibility, nonresponsiveness was communicated to them. They did protest. That was carefully evaluated. I rendered a director's decision which denied the protest because it's very clear-cut what the rules are and the rules weren't met. Pete and Ron did not properly appeal the director's decision, and actually had their attorney send us a letter within that notice period notifying that they would not appeal the director's decision, which effectively resolves the matter and brings finality to the matter. They did not choose to appeal to the, my decision to the hearing master. Instead, they chose this alternative route by appealing to the board directly through public comment at a regular meeting. This approach is inappropriate. It undermines the administrative process prescribed in the protest ordinance, and is contrary to how protests have been addressed previously, some of which involve very highly visible formal appeals to the board in full accordance with protest ordinance. Also mentioned was of the higher cost. It is estimated that based on the bids we received, that the overall cost will be about approximately $966,000 and change higher than the next bidder. Now these, this cost is based on the estimated work that's done. It could be a little bit higher, it could be a little bit less, depending on the actual work. It's pretty obvious that whenever we have to skip a little bidder, the cost is higher. As a normal course, we routinely reject bids that fail to meet the specified disadvantaged business enterprise participation goal, and more recently, the construction apprenticeship program. So again, we do have to skip bidders if they don't meet those program requirements, and it is, it is fairly common. And that's always disclosed in the agenda items when we bring those forward. There was some mention about the process delays that this taken, because the bid's open in November, and it's taken so long. The reason why it's taken so long is because there's due process. We go very methodically to go through when we reject vendors. And again, in this one, we've actually rejected three vendors. So it takes time to go through that. They have to have their due process. If they wish to rebut, we go through that process. That's what takes the time. During that time, if we have work that needs to be completed, we have the ability to issue emergency purchase orders, we have ways of taking care of urgent work, emergency work. It's not like all tree work stops. We can certainly handle that, and we have. In this case, if there is some non-emergency work, we're kind of holding that for the new firm, and that's when that work will be done. But I don't want to leave any impression that we're not taking care of the work because we are. There was also mention of the prime versus subcontracting. Pete and Ron's mentioned that they're a minority-owned firm. They have provided good service to the county. In fact, Pete and Ron's has received approximately $9.8 million from the county since about 2014, which shows the county's been satisfied with their service. The M D, MBE Division reports that Pete and Ron's is not certified by the county as a disadvantaged business enterprise, and it's important to remind the board that prime contractors, regardless of their certification status as disadvantaged business enterprises, must still comply with the subcontracting and participation goal requirements. In this case, one of the recommended vendors, Tucker Enterprise Services Incorporated, is a certified disadvantaged minority business enterprise and was also fully responsive to the specified disadvantaged business enterprise participation goal. They still have to subcontract, even though they may be certified. There was also some mention in roundabout circles about performance bonds, and they were not required on this solicitation. That is deliberate. Whenever there are no advance or progress payments, we don't usually use a bond. I mean, whenever money goes out the door, we would use a bond to make sure that we protect the county's interests. In this case, there are no advance or progress payments, and the payments are made after the services are performed. If the services aren't performed, there's no payment. The intent of this is really to remove the barriers when appropriate, so there are more opportunities for interested firms. We reduce that burden, and ideally, there's more competition because we have more firms that could participate. In the event of a default, we would likely move to the next lowest responsible bidder, the next lowest responsive and responsible bidder for this subject area, or secure temporary service until service until a new awards, excuse me, awards in place. Chasing a bond can be a lengthy and costly process, so I normally only require such bonds when required by Florida statutes in the case of construction or public improvements, or when progress payments or advanced payments are involved. There was also some mention of some of the issues related to the solicitation, meet the bonds, specifications, minimum requirements, the disadvantaged participation goal, the amount, all of that. All of those should be addressed and resolved during the letting process in accordance with the protest ordinance. It is also available to vendors. If they have, if they want to challenge the specifications, if they want to challenge the requirements, they can do that by lodging a formal protest. Not only is it just a challenge, we'll get an email, and we'll resolve it, run it by the department, make sure that's something that's not going to cause any problems with what their goals are. If they still disagree, they have the opportunity to formally protest that. It kind of stays the process, and then we go through that entire process. Doesn't happen very often, but that's always available. Every vendor has the ability to challenge or protest the requirements of any solicitation. However, it must be done in a deliberate manner prescribed by the board in the protest ordinance. Questioning the requirements after a solicitation is closed and evaluated is not appropriate, especially by an otherwise unsuccessful bidder. Lastly, this morning, Pete and Ron's asked that all bids be rejected in favor of a new solicitation to purportedly give all the bidders another chance. If for some reason the boards elect to reject all the bids in favor of resolicitation, and Pete and Ron submits the lowest bid, I will very likely still not recommend award to this firm due to their failure to meet their contractual obligations under the previous contract for the same services. Canceling this procurement does not resolve or erase the failure of this firm to achieve the minimum contractual required participation goal. As with any award recommendation, the MBE Division will review and recommend the most appropriate course in compliance with the county's minority and disadvantaged business development program. As a result of all that, for this particular procurement, awards are recommended to the lowest responsive or responsible bidders, Tucker Enterprise Services Incorporated, who is a Hillsborough County certified disadvantaged minority and disadvantaged women business enterprise, for the west service area at a cost of $3,256,125, and Mid-Florida Tree Service Incorporated for the east service area at a cost of $3,374,825, and south service area at a cost of $3,374,825. A disadvantaged business enterprise participation goal of 3% was established for this work, and the recommended vendors have committed to achieving this goal. With that, the Procurement Services Department does recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Stromer. I'll recognize Commissioner White.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have several concerns about this one. Mr. Stromer has stated that Pete and Ron's Tree Services has provided good services to the county in the past. There's been no issue with the service they provided. Their bid's around $1 million lower than the firm that's being recommended to the board. And I would just ask, and I know the board owns the ordinance, okay? I know it's our policy, but why is the protest process so costly and so cumbersome? Maybe the board has designed the process to be too bureaucratic and too cumbersome, so we may need to do some work on that ordinance. We've talked about this a lot with land use, talking about how it should be easy for people to come and appeal to the board and appeal to their elected officials. I'm not saying that we shouldn't have due process, but maybe a streamlining of the process is in order, particularly for smaller firms that are trying to do business with the county. The final thing that troubles me is that Pete and Ron's is alleging that they have had robust MBE participation, but that the firms, or in some other way, this hasn't been certified properly. So, you know, I would just, just wonder whether or not better education and outreach on the MBE process is necessary, and is there perhaps a way to remedy a situation when people have been providing business to minority and disadvantaged firms, but that they've just had a, an error of a technicality in the fact that maybe those firms or that business hasn't been memorialized or certified properly. So anxious to hear comments from some of the other board members, but those are my concerns at a high level.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. I guess I was going to come kind of from the opposite direction, because I'll say, Mr. Stromer, thank you for such a thorough schooling. I don't think I've ever quite heard, blow-by-blow, exactly how this kind of process works, and I could really appreciate that. I think that this board is especially very concerned to make sure that we honor and do everything we can in terms of getting smaller and underrepresented firms and businesses involved in, and very frequently, we're told that there's none available in that kind of very specific service that is done, that it's difficult. But I appreciated hearing all that was done, and one thing I heard is that during the appeal period, that, you know, that it was stated that there would be no appeal by Pete and Ron's service. I, you know, I wouldn't be adverse to looking this over or learning a little more if indeed it was a huge barrier to some firms to understand or participate, and, you know, the process was too burdensome. But I, I guess I think it's really different than the citizens that come in and the barriers for them, because we're not talking about awarding them a contract, and we're not talking about making sure that in the money we spend here, in the finances and the contracting that we do, that we have made every effort to, to make sure that we are doing our best job with, with those contracts. And from what Mr. Stromer said, it just sounded like there were multiple opportunities to, within a period of years, actually, to remedy some of these issues that were, that were raised. So I will, and I do agree that if we were to do anything now, we would not be honoring this process as it is now. And, and that's really important for, to have really true due process and to make sure, to ensure the integrity of this process, to make sure that we uphold it. If, if there's reasons, Commissioner White, to look at it, and I'm not saying that that's not, for the future, if, you know, those issues, it might be something that could be brought back or considered here. I could always learn more about this, but I felt very assured by each and every very deliberate and thorough point that Mr. Stromer made about the process and how it works. So I feel very comfortable with this award, and I feel very protective of making sure that we are careful in protecting our DM, DWBE programs and, and contracting. And it assures me to hear that this was done in this process.
Thank you, Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner Myers, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Kemp, for your comments. I will not go back and repeat everything what you said, but it is true, the comments that Scott Stromer gave us regarding this case. And if we can remind ourselves, last August, we had a workshop that talked about our MBE and why it was so important. And this is a prime example of why, when bidders come into the county, they must adhere to the guidelines. And so Pete and Ron did not. They did not do that in this case. And to extend them, or say, let's revisit, it defeat the whole purpose of our MBE program. So therefore, I'm going to move for approval of Agenda B five.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Myers, a second by Commissioner Kemp and Commissioner Smith. Are there any other comments or questions? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion carried six to one. Commissioner White read it. No.
Thank you. Ms. Wise.
Thank you. Our next item is item B six. This is a first modification of an agreement for construction and the projected completion services for segments one and three associated with the design build of the South County Potable Water Transmission Main Project, and George Cassidy will present this item.
Thank you, Ms. Wise. Good morning, Board, George Cassidy, Public Utilities. Item B six, we're requesting approval of the first modification to an agreement with Westra Construction for construction of segments one and three of the South County Water Transmission Main Project. This modification increases the contract amount by approximately $47.8 million to a guaranteed maximum price of $69.6 million. And I just want to take a moment to highlight that this is a design-build contract, which is considered an alternative delivery method for project work within the procurement world. And so what is design-build? Design-build takes the design function of a project and marries that to the construction in one contract form. So we have a partnership with Westra to do both the design and the construction. The benefit of this is it allows the department to be very engaged during the design, and once the design proceeds to a certain level, we're able to negotiate the construction cost with the firm for those elements that we're trying to accomplish. In this particular case, it's over 10 miles of pipeline from our new water booster pump station down to the south portions of the county, and that's what's before you today. It's a negotiated amount for segments one and three. Segment two will come to you at a later date. We're working through some issues with easements and right-of-way. Those are progressing very well, so we'll be back to you soon with a third, a second modification that addresses segment two. This modification also establishes 811 calendar days from notice to proceed to final completion, and establishes final completion is January 2nd, 2024. The contractor is committed to a 10% subcontracting for disadvantaged minority and disadvantaged women firms, and the contractor stays committed to that amount 10% through the entire project. The original solicitation for this project was issued prior to September 1, 2021, and therefore, the construction apprenticeship program requirements do not apply. Funding for this project is available in the approved budget for this project. Public Utilities recommends approval.
Move approval.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner, I'm sorry, Cohen, and a second by Commissioner Smith. With that, I'm not seeing any further discussion. Please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you very much. Ms. Wise.
Thank you. We're now able to move to item F one. This is Commissioner Hagan's item regarding the Lake Improvement Grant Program.
Commissioner Hagan.
Thank you. And this should be real quick. I want to say for starters that Rich Reedy in my office has been working with Rick Schott in the county attorney's office on this item. But a few weeks back, we were contacted by the president of Saddleback Lake Association about our Lake Improvement Grant Program that the president believes is well-intended but could cause responsible landowners to choose between adhering to best practices or qualifying for grant money. They contacted staff in February about applying for the Lake Improvement Grant. The residents were provided with an application. It was noted that the program requires the work on the lake to be initiated and completed after the grant has been approved and agreement has been executed. And here's, essentially, it's a timing issue. Mr. Harper, who's the president, advised staff that their project could not be postponed pending the execution of an agreement because in order to be effective, the work on the weed problem had to be performed during a specific phase of the weed or hydrilla seasonal life cycle, I'm getting in the, literally getting in the weeds here, as well as during the dry season with minimal lake rainfall so that a predictable level of herbicide concentration could be maintained in the lake. Nevertheless, the community submitted the application in March. Staff confirmed with the county attorney's office and was told the county will not reimburse for the work done prior to the grant funding agreement. It was approved on April 20th. As it stands now, I guess the blanket policy pertaining reimbursement works as a disincentive when it potentially puts citizens acting in an environmentally responsible manner against eligibility for a grant. So, again, with, conferring with the county attorney's office, we believe there can be some flexibility for exceptional conditions without jeopardizing the integrity of the program. So the motion is just to direct the county attorney's office to work together with the Environmental Services Division and bring back a draft amendment to the county Lake Improvement Grant Program that allows for possible reimbursement of prior expenses under very limited conditions when it makes sense. Not trying to open the door to everything, but it appears that there could be a way to, to improve the overall program, especially in an example like this. So come back, and we'll see what it comes back with.
Yeah, we have a motion by Commissioner Hagan, a second by Commissioner Smith. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As the commissioner that championed the creation of this program, I think this motion is reasonable and in order. You know, there are times when homeowners, you know, have to do the work and seek the retroactive reimbursement. These are small grants. I believe they're $5,000 if I recall correctly. My question for Ms. Beck, would there be a legal mechanism whereby we could remedy this for this particular group of homeowners retroactively?
Yes, I believe so. When we bring back the draft, we could, somebody could include that as part of the motion if they chose.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Because that actually was going to be my question, too, is how do we fix this and make sure we're covered? Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. I'm also supporting this, and I'll just say, Commissioner Hagan, I think it was good, the qualifications that were put on it, because, you know, I mean, it's, it's a small program, and we always want to encourage citizens' work and everything, but I was a little concerned just, you know, that people might be coming afterwards, and, and, you know, it could lead to them not applying ahead of time or, or those conditions. So I think those qualifications make sense to do that, and it's, it's good that we have communities working on, on these issues.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I completely failed to say something when I had the floor the first time. I just want to commend staff and provide my kudos for them applying this policy to the letter. There's always an opportunity for the board to correct our own policies, just like we're doing today, and that can even include a retroactive remedy. But the job of staff is to apply the board's rules to the letter, and I think staff acted completely appropriately. Want to commend staff, continue to urge staff to do that. And again, if anything at the policy level needs to be tweaked, we always have the ability to take care of that here at a board meeting.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Seeing no further comments, please record your vote.
With Commissioner Myers voting yes, motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you very much. Ms. Wise.
Thank you. We have one final item. It is a staff report, item G one. This is to receive a report regarding real property transaction services, and John Mueller and Scott Stromer are here for this item, and we have other staff available, too, for any questions.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Mr. Mueller, you're recognized.
Good morning, Commissioners. While I still have 10 minutes to say good morning, I'm going to share my screen. Okay, and you can hear me and see me and see my presentation.
Mr. Mueller, we're having difficulty hearing you, so either Communications, if you could assist us, or you could get closer to your mic, that would be appreciated.
John, we would suggest moving closer to your mic. You seem to be...
Okay, do I have it? Can you hear me better?
Yep, that's much better. Thank you.
Okay, as well. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, good morning. Thank you, Commissioners. I'm John Mueller, Director of Facilities Management, Real Estate Services, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to provide this staff report on real property transaction services. Scott Stromer should also be available on this presentation. Scott Stromer should also be available on this presentation should you have any procurement-related questions. In addition, I have our real estate division leadership listening and available. I have provided excerpts here on this first slide of three pertinent items which form the framework of which our real estate division proposes transactions to the board and then completes them. In brief, with regards to surplus and selling a property, a board approval and resolution is required for us to identify a property as surplus. As a practice, we always check, recheck, and quite often triple-check with affordable housing as well as other department or county needs before requesting a surplus. Staff will also research a property's circumstances as to how it entered the inventory of the county and, per policy 0307000, look for any special or restrictive circumstances that existed and then provide a recommendation of where the funds of a surplus sale should be directed to. With regards to brokerage services, which we acknowledged was a question as to when and how we select brokers from the last meeting, we conducted our own research looking back to 2017. The vast majorities of our sales, I'll note, thirty-six, which totaled over 1.6 million back to 2017, were done internally by staff with no broker. As you can see on our report, the average sale for those is approximately forty-four thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. Our records indicate that since 2017, staff did recommend and engage Seville's Brokerage Services five times for large property brokerage services. I'll note that none of these transactions were completed, so no fees, which would have been passed on to any potential buyer, were charged. Seville's, it is one of two brokerage services with state contracts which we leveraged. Some options that we would have the board consider going forward is that, quite honestly, the real estate division can act as our broker for all sales. As I mentioned, with only having seen the request for a broker five times since 2017, and because we have qualified staff, some of whom were agents and/or brokers themselves, we are comfortable with that. We can use or leverage our existing surplus policy website. We have over fifteen hundred contacts signed up where they get notifications of surplus sales, as well as conduct outreach to ensure that other county real estate professionals are aware and notified of all sales so that we have the maximum exposure to potential buyers. We would recommend, as another option, that we at least reserve the ability to use a broker should our initial sales attempts require wider reach. However, we will utilize our procurement department to obtain competitive quotes either by the two state contract firms who have local offices here or other qualified firms with similar capabilities and experience. Either of the options above would require a clarification to our current department While not specifically requested, we also wanted to report on two other common services we use. The first of which is appraiser services selections. As you can see, from 2017, we have used these services seventy times with an average value of four thousand two hundred and twenty-seven dollars per transaction. In 2021, our department brought to board our list of appraisers, and for this recommendation, we ensured that we had disadvantaged minority, disadvantaged women, business enterprise An option for appraiser services is to continue to work with Mr. Ken Jones in our MB Division to quantify and scope how we can provide DM, DWB goals for appraisal selection. Each firm is somewhat unique in their expertise, so we will need the disadvantaged business divisions' help to further develop the program and goals there. Lastly, we also need title company services. We do have four firms, one of which is a disadvantaged women business enterprise registered with the county. We believe an option here is to continue our outreach for more DM, DWB firms to be included on that list. And that is our report.
Thank you. And Commissioner Kemp, this was your item. Would you like to, I mean, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I'll say first, I appreciate the job that staff did in looking this up for me. As I stated before, I was a little surprised. There was a lot of information on that item when it came to us, a lot of stabs. And I saw that one particular broker was mentioned, and I was just a little taken aback by that, having gone through the procurement process here so many times, as well as at other Hart or anyplace else I've been. I was surprised to see one named broker automatically selected, and I, just made me curious about the process. I also saw that included in that, even though they said the seller, the buyer pays the broker, we have a stipulation in the contract that said anything under four million dollars, which this could amount to, would give a 6% broker commission, which if it was four million dollars, would be $240,000, which was getting to be more than any employee of the county made in a year. And I was just a little surprised because we put back the, you know, we do put it all together. There's a limited audience for it. It's, you know, it's bid on our website. So this information was all good information because what I learned was that there's been some thirty-six transactions or attempts to sell surplus property since 2017, as you all heard, and it was in total 1.6 million. This is something that could probably be more than that in this one single transaction. And I really didn't think that this, right now with the market like it is, and I was told that that was done kind of in a different time when there was some issues with the market, that, you know, that there might need to be more marketing of it. But I appreciate the fact that staff made multiple recommendations, and I'd like to just move forward that we do what I thought was a really prudent recommendation for this and have the staff continue, as it has in so many other transactions, to move forward with this transaction and be the broker of this transaction as well. I thought it was, and one of my original concerns was, and I know you brought the appraisal into this, but that in this original was our DB and women's firms represented in that when you just do that one, you know, automatic choosing? And so I appreciate that the, that information, especially because of what we were talking about today, was brought forward as well in the appraisal, as looking and making sure that we do all our due diligence to recruit firms in that area too. So my motion on this will be to have the, to have our real estate staff move forward with, or we'll be actually looking at this in the next meeting, but to have it be that our real estate staff would be the broker in this situation and reserve the ability, I think that that makes sense, to go to a broker if needed in the future or in perhaps other items we may not, we may not understand. And as well, I guess I would add support for an increased effort in terms of the appraisal companies to do what we could in that when we assess county or contractors for appraising.
We have a motion by Commissioner Kemp and a second by Commissioner Smith. I see Commissioner Smith, you're in the queue.
Thank you. And thank you, Commissioner Kemp, for, you know, really bringing out the expense, the cost and expense of the broker services that were specified for this one surplusing sale. It makes, and thanks to staff for also pointing out that, you know, we have very experienced real estate staff in our real estate department, and they are capable of brokering the sale in-house with our brokerage services being on hand as backup as needed. But it seems to me it's especially, it should be looked at to use our in-house brokers, particularly in cases like this one that came before us, which had already had multiple unsolicited bids. So you've already got this field of customers waiting. It seems like it's, especially in cases like this, we could really rely on our in-house staff, and we should, you know, hopefully make that a policy to prioritize that option moving forward and only use the outside broker services as needed. But in something like this, also maybe consider reduced rates because a quarter million dollars for something that it already had unsolicited bid seems, seems a lot. So thank you.
Thank you. I actually have a couple of questions as it relates to this item that would potentially not necessarily impact the item as it stands right now. But one of the things that I've been paying attention to in many ways is the policy that is described in this item, policy 080101-00, where the sale of county-owned property actually addresses the issue associated with those that are declared surplus. And then our additional policy that actually allows excess proceeds to go to affordable housing. You know, we did indicate, or we have established where additional properties or surplus properties are evaluated by affordable housing as potentially being used by affordable housing or the surplus of the sale goes there. But what we also are experiencing right now is that our overall economic opportunity, the impact of the fact that we have, as it is the case all over the country, a lack of ability to develop the amount of inventory that we need to address our housing needs in our community. And in that is impacting our overall economic opportunities as we've seen that housing, not only cost, but also availability, is becoming an economic stressor. And when we are asking our real estate department to evaluate properties for a purpose of affordable housing, that may be utilizing only the affordable housing criteria for affordable housing rather than potentially the impact of having workforce housing that exceeds HUD's guidelines and our ability to finance affordable housing. So my question is, when properties are looked at for considering surplusing and economic development looks at these properties for consideration, are they also applying the impact, the economic impact that would facilitate possibly the usage of this property for economic development? So for example, I'll give a most recent example where we are looking at the needs associated with McDill Air Force Base for housing for our military, you know, partner in this, in this area. You know, where would that fit in, it doesn't necessarily qualify as affordable housing, but it is an economic driver to our community and an important element of being able to provide the services to an important economic stakeholder in our community, being this, I guess, second-largest employer in the Hillsborough County. So as it pertains to our policies in this area, how would that play or do we need to consider any, bringing that item forward to the board when it's not necessarily in affordable housing, but it is an economic decision that real estate department would actually consider? Is there any modifications that would need to be considered? Or where is there an opportunity to address that? Mr. Mueller, would you like to try and answer that question for me before we approve this?
I will, I will make an attempt, and I'm sure Mr. Horwitz is listening and may chime in. So currently, ma'am, the properties are evaluated by the Affordable Housing Department standards. If the, I'll, if the workforce housing component were to fall under that evaluation, I'll assume that's going to be a slightly different evaluation than what's in the current policy, then that would be something in addition affordable housing would have to do. Or if that assignment were to fall to another department, I'm not sure exactly at this moment what department that would fall in, but if it were, if that evaluation were to fall into another department, then it would be a subsequent review after affordable housing. So affordable housing would say hypothetically, this property doesn't score high, we're going to move on to other higher priority properties. Because after our check with affordable housing, we do then go and conduct with all departments as well as particularly our partners or constitutionals that the capital programs may have something in, to conduct a broader search. So that would fall somewhere in the, in my, in my analysis here to your, my thoughts to you somewhere after the affordable housing process.
Right. And the reason I bring it up is typically affordable housing not only uses its guidelines for, but it tends to have an overriding factor of attachment to transit. So if it's not close to transit, it's, you know, it's, it's taken off the list. Whereas that may, there may be opportunities where connection to transit isn't necessarily required. So for example, with our military families that have a transportation allowance that would play a part in their ability to carpool, work together with their van pool service and other circumstances. So while it is not always across the board, I was just curious if there would be need to address the second policy that you listed on your slide, to maybe consider the economic impact we have with the low housing inventory that we have available now, so.
Yes, ma'am. Again, I would, I think it obviously would deserve a little study by us because there are, again, the priority, when it's put into the, as we all know, affordable housing is a huge priority, and the policy clearly helps us prioritize this in our staff working. So workforce housing, I think it would be the board's pleasure, is that a prior, is that to be a priority of what ranking, given all the other departments' needs and citizens' requirements for property? So I would just mention that should be probably one of the biggest considerations and given the appropriate amount of thought before it were to say become a policy versus just a, if you will, a department request to be evaluated with other department requests.
Excellent. Thank you. And I'll just make that a future item for consideration to be brought back to the board. And with that, seeing no other comments regarding Commissioner Kemp's motion and the second by Commissioner Smith.
Did you want to receive the report first or take her motion first? How did you want to handle that?
We'll receive the report.
Yeah. Well, actually, I mean, we never have to really receive reports, but anyway, I would just, this is on the floor right now, so if we could just do this and then receive the report.
Okay, sure. Do I take the motion? And so with that, we'll take, record your vote, please.
Motion carried six to zero.
And move to receive the report.
Commissioner Kemp had a motion to receive the report. Commissioner Smith has provided a second. With that, please record your vote. Excellent. Thank you very much. Ms. Wise?
Motion carried six to zero.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that confusion on my part. Their final item is future discussion items.
Okay. So I'll just add what I just said to the future items.
Yeah. We'll look into that.
Because I think it would be, given the need that we've heard economically all the way across the board of the lack of inventory of housing... of inventory of housing in our community, I think it's worth taking a look at to see if there's a way to add to that policy for further consideration. So thank you very much. Any others? Commissioner Myers, you're recognized.
Yes. I don't have a future item, but I have one for today, so I hope it's okay. Madam Chair, if you would contact the Carterata team, we're playing them tonight, the Lightning, and so that our Board can have a little friendly wager with them. And maybe you County Administrator Wise might want to contact the administrator there. And so it's all good and fun.
There you go.
So that we can have be represented with Tampa Bay as well.
Oh, absolutely. I think that's a marvelous idea.
We're in.
Thank you for inviting that. You know, without having an opponent, we don't have a game, so we welcome them. And... But go Bolts. Thank you, Commissioner Myers. I appreciate that opportunity, so. Do you need a motion to that effect?
We could do that, arrange that.
You can arrange that.
Yeah. And just to follow up, you know, I did have a friendly wager with the Broward County Administrator during the Florida Panthers series. And turns out that she's a big hockey fan, too. And I do, of course, have my Lightning earrings on today, because they win when I wear these. So...
Thank you.
Yes. So I had to wear them. But so we had a little wager, and she, of course, lost the bet, and so she wore her Lightning jersey at the beginning of her board beating.
Oh, my gosh.
Pictures about that. She did take it off right away, but she was such a good sport and wore her Lightning jersey.
Well, I didn't wear mine today, but I thought about it. But I wore the blue, just in case, so. Thank you, Commissioner Myers, for making that. I really appreciate that. I don't think we need to vote on that, do we? Okay. Well, thank you very much, everyone. I'm not hearing any other items. Oh, Commissioner Kemp? I'm sorry, go ahead. And then Commissioner Smith?
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Okay, go ahead. Whoever's going first, please do.
I guess I'll do this. I actually wasn't going to do this, because I thought Commissioner White may not be here at some point today, but I wanted to bring this up. I regretted missing our land use, our future land use meeting last Thursday night. We had an opening with our new executive, CEO, at Mozy. And as many of you know, I've been pretty involved in that, and he was the first opening night for people to come there. So that was exciting. And I... And it started at 5:30, so I had no ability to make that meeting that night. But I was... I'm very pleased about what has been done with the overlay district. And we've heard about it in our workshops, and we've heard about it. We had a vote already on it. And so I was... I'm very, very pleased with what is done. I've never heard of this being done before. But I know, Commissioner White, that you've been... And I don't mean this to preclude anything else, and I don't know... I mean, we can't talk, so I can't know that this is okay. But I know that you worked for a long, long time on that very big overlay district. And I'm a huge supporter of overlay districts. We did a couple back when I was an aide to Kathy Castor in Town and Country and in Brandon. And I know at least the one in Brandon, at least since I've been here, was a little bit somewhat forgotten. And I didn't want that to happen. I don't think it will anymore. And I think that what was done there, I know that you worked a long, long time on that, and I think it's a really great effort for a legacy for decades to come. And I just asked staff, bring forward in whatever forms they can, because this has to go in the Land Development Code, that it be named the Stacy White Overlay District. And so anyway, I'd like to have the staff, legal, the land use staff...
Second.
So, yeah. And I guess we're not supposed to take votes at future items, but we'll have, like, many opportunities, because this is the Land Development Code, to do that. So I wanted to put that forward today.
I think that's an excellent request for a future item. Thank you very much. And with that, Commissioner Smith?
Thank you. And of course, I'd be supporting that if that's amenable to Commissioner White. We heard today about, and we approved our county moving forward with a new pipeline route for water, and we know that Tampa Bay Water will be building a new pipeline as well to carry water to South County. And they are... These are just now in the planning stages and choosing the routes. And while we're tearing up streets and putting together the right-of-way and planning where the route goes, and everything it takes to build these pipelines, this is the time to consider putting in a multimodal bicycle pedestrian trail in those corridors at the same time, if possible, if feasible. But I would like to ask the staff of the Community and Infrastructure Planning Department to, you know, have the go-ahead to be discussing this with Tampa Bay Water. I'll be bringing it up at the Tampa Bay Water meeting on Monday as well, pointing this out. I know we'll get support from Commissioner Starkey, who is always supportive of trail possibilities as well. And always, you know, like anything, this probably needs work with our county attorneys, because almost everything does, to look at the feasibility and practicalities of building a trail along the new South County pipelines being planned, and bring back a report on the feasibility, the options, and any legal agreement that might be needed to construct a trail along these pipeline corridors.
Thank you for bringing that up.
So pipes to trails, or pipes with trails.
Pipes and trails, right. And that's all the more reason why it's critically important to coordinate not only our transportation, but our economic development when it comes to water resources and infrastructure. So thank you for bringing that request. I'm sure it'll be very helpful for us to see. Are there any other future requests? I don't have anything prepared right now, but I'll bring it back. By the way, we don't have another meeting until... For a board meeting until after the Fourth of July, so I do want to welcome everyone and celebrate the Independence Day that we'll have for July 4th. And we will reconvene on... Our next board meeting is July 20th, so I look forward to seeing all you then. And with that, I'll call the meeting adjourned.